I'd like to call the TRPA Advisory Planning Commission to order. Today is Wednesday, April 10th, 2024, and the time is 9:35 a.m. The first item on our agenda is the roll call to determine a quorum. Tracy, can you call roll, please?
Mr. Rolling?
Present.
Ms. Carr?
I am present, thank you.
Ms. Chandler?
Present.
Ms. Ferris?
Here.
Mr. Hill?
Good morning.
Ms. Setzer?
Present.
Mr. McNamara?
Present.
Ms. Stala?
Present.
Chief Steven?
Present.
Mr. Tishera?
Good morning.
Madam Chair, we have a quorum.
Great, thank you, Tracy. Moving on to... Oh, sorry, before I move on, I just wanted to make sure that I was able to introduce a very new member to our Advisory Planning Commission, and that's Mr. James McNamara. And I understand you like to go by Jim, is that right? Okay, great, he's our new-
That's fine.
Great, thank you, Jim. He's our new Washoe County lay member. Thank you and welcome. I will now go over the remote meeting rules for the day. For members of the public to observe the meeting, go to trpa.gov, and under the calendar header, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, Hybrid Meeting, for April 10, 2024. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. To address APC members directly with your comments, raise your hand in Zoom by clicking Raise Hand at the bottom of your screen at the appropriate Agenda item. With your hand raised, you will be unmuted by TRPA staff and have three minutes to address the APC. If you have used the dial-in numbers to join us by telephone, you can dial *9 to raise your hand and be unmuted. And to my fellow APC members, if you wish to speak and also raise your hand in Zoom, you'll find the hand icon on the bottom of your screen. Remote APC members may not use the chat box to make any comments or to have sidebar conversations. So please, everyone, if you can, remember to mute your mic unless speaking to cut down on background noise. Finally, I would also like to ask that all remote members turn on their cameras if you are able. And with that, let's move to Agenda Item Number Two, Approval of the Agenda. Staff, are there any recommended changes to our agenda?
Madam Chairman, there are no changes.
Okay, great, thank you, John. So we will deem the agenda approved as posted for the record. Item Number Three, Public Interest Comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the Advisory Planning Commission, please raise your hand now by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing *9 on your phone, and you will be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. All public comments should be as brief and concise as possible so that all who wish to participate, excuse me, may do so. Testimony should not be repeated. I'll have the discretion to set appropriate time allotments for individual speakers, three minutes for individuals and group representatives, as well as for the total time allotted to oral public comment for a specific agenda item. No extra time for participants will be permitted by the seeding of time to others. So in the interest of efficient meeting management, the chairperson reserves the right to limit the duration of each public comment period to a total of one hour. Written comments received by 4:00 p.m. yesterday were forwarded to the APC members before the meeting's start time. Late comments may be distributed and posted after the meeting. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in the subject line of your email. And please note the APC is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on this agenda. So before going online, do we have any members of the public who wish to make comment here in the room? Seeing none, do we have any members of the public online?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have one hand raised. Anne Nichols, if you're on mute, you can address the commission.
Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, good morning, thank you. Anne Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. It was a year ago, April 26th, that the TRPA approved the Boulder Bay, now called Waldorf Astoria Project. There was a notice of default for $100 million filed yesterday against the... It's in foreclosure. What I want to say today is that, you know, having followed this since 2007, we're looking at, you know, almost 20 years, and the BMPs have never been done. We're on our second failed development attempt. It seemed like, in all this time, you know, even though it's a huge project, it's over 800,000 square feet, when the original project was 140,000. It's just, the TRPA is chasing large projects as the solution to all our ills, and we don't have the infrastructure for it. It's been pointed out a million times. But, you know, it doesn't seem like anyone listens. And it's really, the governing board isn't listening. No, maybe you, APC, can make some sense. We need to have smaller, feasible projects. These projects that are $600 million, you know, they're so expensive to build. You can't get the money, the interest rates are too high. It's just foolish. You know, in the last decades, we could have had something that was reasonable. So I'm just hoping that, you know, there could be some financial realism about these things. And not the pie in the sky, oh, we'll give them another floor, we'll give them another, we'll give them more this, more that. Let's face it, affordable housing, which I am upset you're including, you're calling achievable housing workforce housing. It's not the same because achievable has no income cap. So I wish you not use that. But in any case, that's all going to have to be subsidized because all we get are... All we get are these luxury condos. And, you know, we took out, what, 146 condo or motor homes at the Tahoe Beach Club, and now there's $5 million condos. We took out, they just bought Motel 6 in South Shore. That was another, that was 123 units that could have been converted to... Excuse me, how many was it? 143 units that could have been converted to accommodate housing. Same with the Lakeside Inn, 123 rooms. That's 256, 66 rooms we could have had for workforce housing. So let's think about this more carefully, more analytically. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne.
Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment?
Okay, thank you, Catherine. That closes Item Three, Public Interest Comments. Moving on to Item Four, Disposition of Minutes. We have three draft meeting minutes for our review. First, from November 8, 2023, on page five of your packet. Another from December 6, 2023, on page 33 of your packet. And finally, the final set from February 14, 2024, on page 61 of your packet. And if we have any comments on these, I think it would be most efficient if we took these one at a time. Do we have any questions or comments from APC members for the November 8, 2023, meeting minutes? Hearing none? Do we have any comments or questions from APC on the December 6, 2023, meeting minutes? Okay. Do we have any questions or comments on the February 14, 2024, meeting minutes? No? Okay. I will take a motion to approve our meeting minutes for all three meeting minutes. Okay, thank you. We can approve them with an affirmative vote. So all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Nay. Any abstentions?
I will abstain because I wasn't at all of those meetings.
Okay, thank you, Heather. Great, thanks, everybody. Onto Item Five, Planning Matters. Item 5A is an Active Transportation Plan Update. And information can be found on page 87 of your packet. And I'll transfer this over to Kira Richardson to present for us. Thank you, Kira.
Thank you, everyone. I am Kira Richardson, Senior Transportation Planner with the Tahoe Regional Planning Agency. Full disclosure, this was supposed to be presented by my colleague, Ryan Murray, but he was chasing the eclipse and he got stuck in Arkansas. So I will be filling in for him here. And he really did write this plan. So I'll try to do this presentation justice, but I might not be able to answer every question, but I'll do my best. Okay, next slide, please. So first, I just want to start by explaining what active transportation is. This is probably obvious to most of you, but it's not obvious to everyone. So active transportation refers to any mode of travel that involves walking, biking, or rolling. And rolling is kind of a broad term. It could include scooters, one-wheels, or assisted devices such as a wheelchair or a power chair. And then this can also include devices that are electric or human-powered. So it's a broad umbrella of travel modes under active transportation. Next slide, please. So where does TRPA fit in to the larger active transportation picture in the Tahoe Basin? TRPA does have some sway with environmental permitting and technical assistance in project design, but ultimately does not construct projects. So TRPA's primary role is in support through plans like the Active Transportation Plan and the Regional Transportation Plan. And so this plan provides technical support, project prioritization, robust data analysis, and design toolkits, which are all hopefully useful to locals as they plan and implement their active transportation projects. Also, locals, especially in California, can adopt this active transportation plan as their own plan, which makes them eligible for certain funding sources. So for example, the California Active Transportation Program, having a current active transportation plan is a requirement of that funding program. Next slide, please. So one of the specific roles that TRPA plays is in bicycle and pedestrian monitoring. The monitoring program, which is outlined in and informs the ATP, is also something that TRPA does specifically working with the local jurisdictions for active transportation. So through this program, we work with the locals to collect bike and pedestrian counts all over the region with a series of monitors. And we also help collect pre- and post-project counts, which are incredibly helpful to implementing more projects in the future and ensuring that our region remains competitive for grants. Next slide. So during plan development, TRPA worked with a technical advisory committee, which was made up of representatives from each of the organizations on the slide. So you'll see all their logos. We met with the Technical Advisory Committee to vet analyses and project priorities. And then we also conducted significant public and stakeholder outreach throughout plan development. And then when the draft plan was released at the end of February, we also had a public comment period for about a month. And we received several comments. There were a lot of really great comments, and a lot of them were incorporated into the final plan. And I don't think that Ryan included a summary of the comments in this packet, but when we do bring the final plan to the TRPA Governing Board later this month for their approval, the Governing Board packet will have a summary of the comments and how they were incorporated. Next slide. So these are the things that are new in this Active Transportation Plan update, and I'll provide a few more details about each of these in the next few slides. But another theme that you'll notice throughout this presentation and in the plan is that we've made a pretty significant policy shift in this plan. The plan shifts from a really heavy focus on building Class 1 multi-use paths everywhere to focusing more on lowering the stress of on-street facilities within town centers. So we're not moving away from recommending Class 1s by any means, but... Because they're still a really fantastic facility, but they can also be the most time-consuming and expensive facilities to build. And there are other improvements that can and should be made to lower network stress. And then I'll also just mention that, obviously, this map is really hard to see on the screen, but there are web maps on the ATP website, which is trpa.gov/ATP. And you can view all the proposed projects and zoom in and look through the data there. Next slide. So new in this Active Transportation Plan is the Bicycle Levels of Traffic Stress Analysis, which is a comprehensive quantitative bicycle analysis of the entire roadway network in the Tahoe Basin. So through this analysis, we essentially rank segments of the roadway network based on their stress levels. So one being the lowest stress and four being the highest stress per cyclist. This ranking considers certain characteristics of each roadway network, such as the number of lanes, posted speed limit, and the presence of on-street bicycle facilities. And there's a couple other things, too. This analysis typically would go up to a Level 4, which is the highest stress. But in Tahoe, we are special, and we have an even higher category of 4.5. So this is where there are particularly stressful facilities. And this would be on a roadway network where there's really high speeds, lots of travel lanes, and no shoulder. And so you'll see on the map a couple of those areas. And I want to say that this analysis is really important because less confident riders, such as families, people who are just getting on a bike, they feel safer on lower-stress facilities. And so if we can make streets lower stress, we can make riding more attractive, and we can make it safer for everyone. Next slide. So this is sort of the pedestrian counterpart to the Bicycle Levels of Traffic Stress. This is the Pedestrian Experience Index, which is another new analysis included in this update. And this is another qualitative or quantitative analysis for pedestrians, which is mostly focused on town centers as it factors in the density of commercial businesses. So on this map, you'll see, like, the green areas are the higher-quality pedestrian experience areas, and those are primarily focused in town centers. And this doesn't mean that a walk on a shared-use path through the forest isn't a great pedestrian experience, but this method of analysis is mostly important for communicating where we can maximize pedestrian infrastructure within town centers. And I think that we'll probably be making some updates to this analysis in the future to kind of try to account for some of those areas where we might have nice pedestrian facilities that are not within town centers. Next slide. So the previous Active Transportation Plan, which was adopted in 2018, had about 200 projects on the list. And this plan has over, just over 100. So we really cleaned it out and whittled down the project list, working very closely with the local jurisdictions. And we worked with each of the local jurisdictions to accommodate their own project lists. And then we also included some of the projects that came out of the recently adopted or endorsed Vision Zero Strategy. So those are some of the more safety-focused projects. And the project list is organized into project tiers. So there's Priority 1, 2, and 3. And this is based on... We developed the priorities based on public input, considering the regional significance of a specific project, data from the Bicycle Levels of Traffic Stress, the Pedestrian Experience Index, and the Vision Zero Strategy, and then meetings with the different locals. And this doesn't mean that a project that's ranked as a 2 or 3 couldn't happen before a project that's ranked as a 1. But really, the prioritization, I think, will help us mostly as we start to roll projects up into the Regional Transportation Plan because we do have to slim that list down a little bit. So the project list is available in Chapter 4 of the Active Transportation Plan, and then there's also an appendix, Appendix F. Next slide. So also included in the Active Transportation Plan are information and recommendations on winter maintenance of active transportation facilities. So a couple examples here. The first is snack downs, and that's shown in the photo on the right on this slide. So snack downs are sort of a way for us to take advantage of snow to aid in our design. So by using snow and where the plows actually plow the snow, we can sort of pilot a design without... And collect data on a specific design without spending money on the engineering. And so you'll notice when snow plows come by, a lot of times the roads are narrower, there are tighter turning radii. And all of that reduces vehicle speeds on the roads and decreases crossing distances. So I think this is just a neat way that we could sort of take advantage of one of our... One of our seasons in Tahoe. And then the plan also includes information about different types of snow removal devices in Chapter 2. So there are different devices that can be used on bike paths instead of just like a regular snow plow. And some of those devices will also help protect the pavement. So one example is a snow brush if there's not a lot of snow. And then another example is a snow dragon. And Ryan was trying to explain to me what this is yesterday, and I'm not sure I fully understood. But basically, I think that a snow dragon melts the snow, and then there's like a filter for the snow melt. So it's good for water quality, was my understanding. But there's more information on that in the plan. And then I think that, in general, winter maintenance is a really important component of this plan because maintaining these facilities means that we're keeping the transportation network accessible year-round. So, and this is particularly important for people with disabilities. You know, snow might be a minor hindrance for able-bodied people, but for people in a walker or a wheelchair, it can be a complete barrier. Next slide. So the final major update in this Active Transportation Plan is a discussion on some of the facilities that we don't have but would like to see in certain areas. So first, our Class 2B facilities, which is basically just a bike lane with a painted buffer. Next, our Class 4 facilities, which are similar to Class 2B, but are protected with a vertical separation. And so you'll see that in the photo on the left. And I think that we heard the city of South Lake Tahoe actually recently piloted some planter boxes. And we heard anecdotally that they had some issues with them because cars were hitting the planter boxes. But to me, that means it's probably working. And I think that we would all rather see a car hitting a planter box than a pedestrian. So I think there's some other areas around town where those could probably be implemented. And then another benefit of these solutions is that the vertical buffers could be moved in winter months for maintenance. And then the buffer, either vertical or painted, also narrows the width of the vehicle traffic lane, which again lowers speeds. And then we also have some suggestions in the plan on improving shared-use paths. We, I think we've heard a lot through this plan development process and in the past couple of years about some of the issues with e-bikes and scooters. These devices have really exploded in the last couple of years, which is great, but I think that they've grown in popularity to the point where we didn't really build the paths in mind with these devices. So there's some recommendations on how we can accommodate e-bikes and scooter riders by widening the path or adding more signage to help users navigate different spaces on a bike path. And then I think this also points to just another reason to focus more on the on-street network because when e-bikers and scooter riders feel safer riding on the street, they'll move off the sidewalk or the shared-use path, which will help them separate from pedestrians and slower cyclists who are using the paths. Next slide, please. So I'll kind of wrap it up here, but just wanted to note that we released the draft Active Transportation Plan for review on February 27th, and we were accepting public comments through March 24th. So we've, in the past month, we've incorporated the comments, or the past couple of weeks, we've incorporated the feedback that we heard, and we are now seeking the APC's recommendation of approval to the TRPA Governing Board later this month. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions. And then I think if you go to the next slide, you'll see Ryan's email. So if there's any questions I cannot answer, I will have him reach out to you.
Great, thank you, Kira. Appreciate that. Great presentation. Do I have any questions or comments from members of the APC? Go ahead.
Eric Young, Washoe County. Nice to see everybody in person today. You did fine, thank you. Ryan being stuck is not a problem. So that was really well done, I appreciate it. I'm curious about you. You showed us the metrics for the stress level of bicycles. Once again, that's something that you're doing up here at TRPA that I want to take home with me. I often see things that you're doing here that I go, oh, we could do that. Not so much just in Incline, but down in the meadows as well. So I appreciate you moving things forward in that way. But I didn't see a metric for the pedestrian 0% to 100% measurement. And I'm wondering how that's determined. How would you end up with the 50%? How would you end up with a 75? What is that metric that is? So I was curious about how that would work.
Yeah, so the Pedestrian Experience Index, the analysis was different from the Bicycle Levels of Traffic Stress, and it considered, I think, quite a few more factors. And I, I'll be honest, I don't fully know how it works, but I think they considered, you know, lighting, density. So that's why town center areas were kind of a higher quality of pedestrian experience. I think they considered the speeds, the posted speed limits, the number of travel lanes, the width of the sidewalk. So there was a bunch of different factors. And there is an appendix on the methodology included. And I don't know exactly what appendix it is.
Clearly, I missed that then, but thank you.
Yeah, so there's an appendix included that includes the methodology that we use to develop both the Bicycle Levels of Traffic Stress and the Pedestrian Experience Index.
Okay, that's great. Lastly, I'd say that the winter maintenance issue was really real for us in Washoe County. I don't really know what the experience is in the other jurisdictions, but it's a significant issue for us. We're getting to the point in the other seasons when you can potentially get from your residential area to a commercial area, an active area, without having to get in your car. It's not perfect yet, but it's better than it used to be. But in winter, it's just ironically, of all the seasons, that is the season when we are forcing people to go get in their car, to go just a few blocks because the maintenance of the pedestrian and active transportation facilities is a significant challenge. And just in a kind of, we're willing to do it. We would love to be able to do it. And as you can imagine, it's a resource issue just to obtain one device to help you on those smaller trails and smaller facilities, to obtain it, and then to use it, and then to maintain it subsequently. is a significant investment in staff and training and just to obtain the thing, first of all. And so it is a real challenge. And we would be willing to listen in to hear to other jurisdictions about how they are experiencing that challenge in terms of just the, the commitment to the infrastructure and capital facilities necessary to do those smaller trails and smaller pedestrian things. That, we would be very interested in hearing everybody else's experience with that. So thank you very much for the presentation, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments or questions in the room? Go ahead, John.
Fair, great presentation. I just had one question. I know our staff has been touched with Ryan to make sure that the projects that we have identified is included in ATP. But moving forward as we prepare our midtown area plan, what's, I guess, what's the procedure for including future projects that we may anticipate in the ATP? Is it going to be updated annually, or is it just an administrative process just to add projects onto the list?
That's a great question. So the next, I guess, iteration of our project list development is through the Regional Transportation Plan, actually, so we're kicking that off this year, and we'll be updating and hopefully adopting it in 2025. So there is an opportunity to add projects to that list. But then the Active Transportation Plan, I think we try to update every four years, but we do have the opportunity to do technical amendments as well, where we can update the project list. So, and that, that's kind of on an as-needed basis.
Do I have any? Oh, go ahead, Jim Nacnamara.
Hi, my first comment, right? Excellent presentation. I did have questions about how, how the data is aggregated for all the different areas for pedestrian and bicycle use. Do you have like regular traffic counters like we have on the trail? And is that a year-round process? Do you have data that trends, you know, for each season or day? And how useful would be accident information from CHP and all the other police agencies, and is that aggregated as well? And are there hotspots that we can work on as a priority? Thank you.
Yeah, great question. So to answer your first question, the bicycle and pedestrian monitoring program I talked about in the beginning of the presentation is where we collect all of the bicycle and pedestrian data. So we have a series of counters. We've been, I think those were installed maybe starting back in 2015, I want to say, on different paths around the region. And they are, I think it's become common practice that local jurisdictions will install them when they build a new path segment. So we have a number of different counters, and we collect that data monthly. So it, the counters that we use, they can, they count by day, and they can distinguish between pedestrians and cyclists. And then we have, one of our staff goes out and collects them, downloads the data from the counters, I think, at least once a month or around once a month. And that data is all available on our website, lake tahinfo.org. And then I think you can click on the bicycle and pedestrian monitoring page to view it and download it. And we definitely use it in our planning. And then to answer your second question about crash data and hotspots, we actually, prior to completing this plan, we actually brought a Vision Zero strategy forward for endorsement to the TRPA Board in February, I think it was. And that document contains more information about crashes specifically. It has information about crash hotspots. And all of this information from the Vision Zero strategy and the Active Transportation Plan will be included in the Regional Transportation Plan, which we're working on.
Just one more question. There's an increase in adaptive riding bicycles and, as, as we mentioned, seniors and, and difficulty in navigating just about everywhere without planning. So is that a consideration for all future projects, that they're flat enough or limited, limited changes in terrain so that even seniors or people on adaptive bikes can, can navigate?
Yeah, I mean, I, someone correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I believe that that's a requirement now, that all facilities that are built are required to be compliant with Americans for Disabilities requirements.
Thank you. Do we have any members of APC on Zoom who have any questions or comments? Okay, hearing none. Thank you very much, Kira. Appreciate the information. Oh, sorry, before you leave, we do have public comment. Thank you. So we will now move on to public comment. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov, and in the calendar, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, April 10, 2024. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. If any member of the public wishes to address the APC, please raise your hand now by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen, or by dialing star nine on your phone, and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Do we have any public comments in the room? No? How about online?
Madam Chair, we have two hands raised online. Okay, the first hand up is Ann Nichols, and if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yeah, hello, Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. I didn't see in the packet where you had that list, that project list. So it would be really nice, I'd love to have that emailed, preserve@ntpac.org. It seems, it was very interesting where the money is proposed to be spent. But also on your map about bike level stress, on Crystal Bay, you have it, the Crystal Bay Hill, as moderately low stress for bicyclists, which is like just crazy. I've lived there 54 years, and it's the scariest section there is. So I mean, you need to fix your maps, or, or again, there's a disconnect between what you think on South Shore is going on on North Shore. The walkable, bikeable claim on these new projects and things going through it, I think that that is also a misnomer. You know, there, in the winter, it really is not walkable, bikeable in most of these areas. Some places, we have some sidewalks, and some of them are kept clean. But other than that, it isn't possible. Thank you.
Next hand raised is Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thanks, Doug Flaherty, TahoeClean Air dot org. Staff suggest portions of the ATP be built on the concept of a bicycle levels of stress and pedestrian experience index analysis. TRPA, TTD, and the TMPO would be negligent if they did not include a wildfire evacuation stress test as part of the plan. In this case, a cumulative roadway by roadway or path by path, trail by trail, wildfire evacuation capacity analysis, evaluating wildfire evacuation life safety impacts on residents and visitors who are driving, walking, biking, and parking during a wildfire evacuation. TRPA and TTD and the TMPO should immediately begin, including within its transportation plans, a discussion regarding the critical life safety impacts of wildfire smoke and rapid fire spread caused by burning brands connected with the significant increased numbers of use of outdoor trails, walkways, bike lanes, and public transportation as supported within the plan. The plan depicts the continuation of the East Shore Trail from San Harbor to approximately Thunderbird, directly along the shore zone of Lake Tahoe, in much the same manner as the existing East Shore Trail. This proximity to the lake shore zone should not be allowed without a new or supplemental EIREIS. This due to changing and new information since the original US Forest Service and TRPA environmental analysis concerning wildfires and wildfire evacuation, and additionally, the now known substantial number of daily east shore trail users, of which will create significant increase in vehicle miles traveled. A new or supplemental EIREIS is needed to analyze data and identify the true environmental and public safety impact of this new segment of the east shore trail. We need to find out what kind of impact this will have on our once pristine Nevada east shore land and water, its users, and including parking. Finally, keep the pristine east shore true. Say no to Trail, Trail Two. Trail Two is the stretch from San Harbor to the Thunderbird. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Do we have any other public comments online?
There are no other hand raised to comment. Okay, thank you.
Well, that closes public comment for this item. Thank you very much for those of you who provided comment. I was reminded that the APC is being requested to take action on this item. We're being requested to potentially recommend approval of the draft ATP. May I have a motion?
A motion to recommend that the Governing Board adopt ATP.
I'll move that the APC recommends approval of the Active Transportation Plan to the Governing Board.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Tracy, can we do a roll call vote, please?
Ellery, could I have a momentary discussion on the motion?
Sure, can we have discussion on the motion, please? Go ahead, Jennifer.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to identify the interesting comment that we just heard in regard to the intersection between these sorts of active transportation modes and emergencies. And this does appear like a very good plan for promoting and enhancing and protecting people in active transportation on a normal day. I'm wondering where that discussion belongs when it's not a normal day, and people are out enjoying the biking, the walking, you know, they've been encouraged to do that. They may be far from their car, and, and, you know, like the example, if a fire blows up quickly. Probably in a different group. I'm thinking maybe where that discussion lies, but I would ask that maybe TRPA consider where this discussion could occur, particularly maybe in an, in an emergency management group or something along those lines to, to talk about the, the promotion of these active transportation modes and what that means during emergencies. So, thank you.
Go ahead, John.
Sure. Thank you for that question, comment, Ms. Carr. We are actively engaged in a couple of efforts that I can think of that where we're going to address that. One is, and you'll be hearing about this later in the, in the years, we're working with the Tahoe Fire and Fuels Team and the MAC, which is the something coordination, I can't remember the, anyway, and the Fire Multi-Agency Coordinating Committee. And you probably recall that you heard from Chief Lundgren update on some of the work they're, they're looking at on evacuation. And I know in some cases, they look at trails as, if they're wide enough, some trails can be used as part of an evacuation system and/or fire breaks. I'm not saying that, that they have identified those yet, but I know that that's something we'll consider in that. I'm sure they'll consider in that effort. And then the second item is, and I hope I'm not announcing something I shouldn't announce, but Kira and Kat McIntyre and Michelle Glickard on our staff were astute enough to catch a grant opportunity called PROTECT, which is planning for, I don't, I can't remember what the P R O T E C T stands for, but we received notification that this week that we received a $1.75 million grant to work on emergency communications for transportation during events like, not only emergencies like disasters, but also maybe during peak times for tourism, and also to work on thinning and identifying and thinning evacuation routes. So there's a lot of work going on around that. I don't know that, that that specifically gives you something to put into this plan, Jennifer, more than what's there, but I just wanted to let you know, we've got a number of efforts working on that. Hope that helps.
Yes, does, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Eric.
Thank you. I, I think the key to making those two efforts responsive to those comments is to just make sure that the TRPA staff and the others who are represented in those efforts are bringing up active transportation uses and issues during the discussions. And when they're sitting around the table, which they're going to be, or sitting around the Zoom table having the discussions, let's just ask that they ask the questions about active transportation. And, and then at the end of the day, we'll find out how it fit in. And we'll find out if we need a special effort to accommodate those things. But for the time being, if we could just ask that those two efforts be directed to at least ask the active transportation questions when it's appropriate, I think that would be responsive to Ms. Carr's.
Happy to do that, and two of the three people who worked on that grant are sitting in the room. So I think they've heard the direction from APC.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we've had a first motion and a second, and we've had discussion. Is there any additional discussion on the motion? Okay, thank you. All right, Tracy, to you for a roll call vote.
Ms. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? Circle back. Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hill? I see you're turning your mic on, but we're not getting any feedback from that. Ms. Stala?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Kira. Great. Thanks, everyone. Great discussion. Appreciate that. We'll move on now to item number six, Public Hearings. Six A is the discussion and possible recommendation on the proposed amendment to the Washoe County Tahoe Area Plan to add schools, kindergarten through secondary as a special use within the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone for those parcels equal to or greater than three acres in size. Information can be found on page 91 of our packet. I'll pass this on to Michelle Brown to present.
Madam Chair and members of the Commission, Michelle Brown, Associate Long Range Planner, for the record. Our present presenter, Courtney Waiki from Washoe County, will be joining us remotely and conducting a presentation in a moment. First, I'd like to introduce that we have a request from Washoe County. Proposing an amendment to their area plan. The proposed change would allow an additional land use. Of kindergarten through 12th grade. Schools on sites of three acres or larger with a special use permit. In the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone. TRP staff have prepared a staff report summarizing. The proposed amendment and it has been determined to be in compliance with, in compliance, excuse me, with TRPA regional plan. And in conformance with the Code of Ordinances. The documents supporting these findings can be found in. Attachments D through G of the staff report. This item was heard by RPC on March 27th and is scheduled to go to the governing board on April 24th. I'd like to remind the commission today that this item. Is not a project approval, but rather a request for a zoning area. Amendment to an area plan. To add a land use with a special use permit. The special use permit review process is a higher level. Of review that requires additional documentation, noticing and public hearing. Having said that, there are currently two active temporary use permits within the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone. That could be affected by the proposed area amendment. The first permit holder is operating. A kindergarten through eighth grade school. Under a six month extension of a temporary use permit. That is scheduled to expire on September 7th, 2024. If the proposed amendment is approved. A special use permit will be required for this use to continue beyond the six month extension. The other active permit holder in the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone was granted a temporary use permit in November of 2023. To establish a kindergarten through eighth grade school. If the proposed amendment is approved. Also, a special use permit will be required for the permit holder to pursue this use. Courtney Waikie from Washoe County is joining us remotely, who will go through a presentation on the proposed area plan amendment. And answer any questions. Following the presentation and comments, the commission will be asked to make a motion on this item. And now I'd like to hand it over to Courtney Waikie from Washoe County. And Courtney, are you with us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Not sure why my. My video is not popping up, but we'll go ahead and just, oh, there we go. Join as a panelist. Okay. Okay, thank you so much. Courtney Waikie, Senior Planner with Washoe County. I do apologize. I certainly wish that I was. In the room there with you all, but I had some unforeseen circumstances. So I'm, I'm, it's a pleasure for me to be able to. Join remotely. So as Michelle Brown just summarized, this is a request from Washoe County to amend the Tahoe area plan. Next slide, please. Okay, so the subject request is to amend Washoe County Tahoe's, Washoe County's Tahoe area plan. Section 110 dot 220 dot 275. To add schools kindergarten through secondary use type as a permitted use, subject to a special use permit. On those parcels in size equal to or greater than three acres within the Tahoe Wood Creek Regulatory Zone. Schools kindergarten through secondary does include kindergarten, elementary and, and secondary schools serving up to 12th grade. Next slide, please. To give you a sense of where the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone is. It's generally located west of Mount Rose Highway, south of College Drive, east of Village Boulevard. And north of Tahoe Boulevard. The Wood Creek Regulatory Zone is one of 16 residential regulatory zones in the area plan. These regulatory zones focus primarily, primarily on single family dwellings. But allow other use types such as multifamily in a broad scope of public service and resource management uses. The primary vision for residential regulatory zones is to quote. Maintain safe and functional residentially focused regulatory zones with development that contributes to the desired community character, character. The Wood Creek Regulatory Zone also includes a designated special area on two parcels established to allow public service uses on publicly owned. Parcels and that's shown in with the SA and the red dots there on the west. Corner of Wood Creek Regulatory Zone. Please. Next slide, please. The parcels highlighted in yellow represent those parcels within the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone that are three acres or greater in size. These are the parcels in which the proposed additional use would be allowed subject to the special use permit. The only two privately owned parcels are owned by Saint Francis and Village Church. Next slide, please. Okay, a little bit of history and public outreach that has occurred since the last year. In June of 2023, the applicant to the county, that is. Held a neighborhood meeting. Notice was sent to 198 properties. 20 people attended. Public concerns included traffic, noise, parking, environmental impacts, fire safety and possible potential negative impacts to public schools. There was included as an attachment to the county's staff report. Well, the county Board of County Commissioners Staff Report, a response from the applicant to each of those concerns. In June of 2023, a, the subject, which is to the county, that is. Development Code Amendment application was submitted. And then that's to clarify that county adopts these, the area plan in a couple of different ways than maybe other jurisdictions do. In that it's a development code amendment to the county, but it is an amendment to the Tahoe area plan for TRPA purposes. In September 20, September 27th, 2023, TR, we did hold a TRPA Regional Plan Implementation Committee. Informational meeting, understanding now that it is RPC and not RPEC. TRPA received nearly 100 written public comments. Approximately 36 were in opposition and 55 expressed support for the amendment. There was, and there's a mistake here in my presentation, appalled, my apologies. There was 11. Public comments and all testimony was given in support of the proposal. All RPEC members express support for the proposal with no notable concerns raised. November 7th, 2023, the Washoe County Planning Commission voted. Held a public hearing and voted unanimously to recommend approval of the Development Code Amendment. W D C A 23 dash 001 to the Board of County Commissioners. On January 23rd and February 20th of 24, 2024, that is. The Washoe County Board of County Commissioners held their first and second readings. And voted unanimous unanimously to adopt the Development Code Amendment. Subject that is to TRPA's final approval. On April 27th, the Regional Plan Committee received a presentation by both county and TRPA staff. Similar to today's, took public comment deliberated and passed a motion recommending approval to the governing board. Next slide, please. There are 27 regulatory zones within the Tahoe area plan. The requested school use type is only permitted outright in the village. Incline Village Commercial Regulatory Zones. And are permitted with a special use permit in the Incline Village Residential and Fairway Residential Zones. Regulatory Zones, apologies. Next slide, please. A little bit of background into the county applicant or applicant to the county, and we do have Anne Marie. Lane from Dow Consulting also on the line who will be providing some additional insight. Into the purpose and their requested amendment. Saint Clair's was founded in 2018 and is the only Catholic school offered in the North Tahoe area. In 2022, Saint Clair's was informed their existing lease would not be renewed for the 2022-23 school year. And therefore was in search of a new location. Since 2022, they have been operating out of Saint Francis at 701 Mount Rose Highway under a temporary use permit issued by TRPI. The second applicant is Village Church, which is also located within the Wood Creek Regulatory Zone, north of Saint Francis. And they too wish to operate an elementary school in addition to the existing preschool. Village Church representatives met with Washoe County staff to begin the process to establish a proposed school use type in the regulatory zone. And were informed the use type was not currently allowed. However, staff did indicate that Saint Clair's was already pursuing a code amendment for the same purpose. So Village Church and Saint Clair's agreed to collaborate and submitted a combined application on the requested amendment. Next slide, please. As discussed, the request is to amend the, this pertinent section to add schools. Kindergarten through. Secondary as a permissible use type subject to a special use permit. And it just popped up. So this is the actual. Text that would be amended, shown in red there. As you can see, the schools kindergarten through secondary would be subject to a special. Use permit under the land use permit requirement there. And then. Also, we have the asterisk indicating it would be in only for those parcels equal in size. To or greater than three acres. If the amendment is adopted by TRPA. Village Church in Saint Clair's or a subsequent property owner would still be required to obtain an approved special use permit. To establish the school use. The special use permit process is a site specific review of a use that requires special use findings. To determine if the uses have the potential to adversely affect other land uses, transportation systems, public facilities. Or, or other environmental resources in the visit, in the vicinity. The special use permit process also requires neighborhood notification, a neighborhood meeting. And subsequent public hearings with appropriate noticing. Next slide, please. Between both the TRPA and Washoe County, I would actually say this number is quite a bit greater than maybe even. Then the over 200, well, at least it is over 200 public comments since June of last year. As I stated throughout my presentation, there's been a mix of support and opposition. And the public concerns predominantly surrounded around traffic, noise, parking, environmental impacts, fire safety. And possible negative impacts to existing public schools. There were no agency concerns or comments. Received in opposition of this application. As I stated earlier, Anne Marie Lane of Dow Consulting is also on the line, I believe, or possibly even in the room. And can summarize their responses to each of the concerns. As well as provide insight into any of the environmental documents submitted. In association with this amendment as required by TRPA for a area plan amendment. Next slide. With that, I thank you, and I am open for any questions. Otherwise, I can, we can open it up to Emery if necessary, or have her respond. To questions as they come up. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Courtney. To members of the APC, any questions? Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, thanks for the presentation. I know there's a history on this. Can anybody briefly summarize why? It, it couldn't be located in the village district. That the, the law currently allows or the. TRPA currently allows. And what was the main? Objection of it not being there where we're trying to produce a walkable, livable. Space in the village center. That's all.
Thank you for that question. And, and for that, I am going to turn it over to Ms. Lane because she has done her due diligence and has been working on this project. And, and is the one who ultimately. Requested the proposed locations.
Thank you, Courtney Waikie. This is Anne Marie Lane for the record. Dow Consulting. Very solid question. Thank you for bringing that up. Ultimately, when this process started, it came with the applicants of Saint Clair's coming to me saying. Hey, we don't have a home for our school and ideally we would like to locate within the church in that we. Offer religious education, which we participate in religious activities on a daily basis. We would like to be housed. In our church, but that's currently not allowed. So. We did an extensive review on where schools are allowed within the basin and. It's very limited. And there, there simply was no space available. Something that I would like to point out. To the commission is that. Reviewing data on private enrollment over the last 10 years previous to 2021. It stayed consistently about at 20,000 throughout the state of Nevada. But then during the 2021, 2022 school year, the state of Nevada sought an increase of approximately 1,466 students enrolled in private schools across the state. That's a 7.6% increase in private school enrollment compared to the previous year. That growth repeated at approximately the same rate for the 2022, 2023 school year. Which added another 1,506 students enrolled in private school. So ultimately, this proposed development code amendment is a direct response to the increased interest in private schooling. And the limited regulatory zones in the Tahoe area plan that allow for school use. I hope that addresses your question.
Do you have any follow up or any other questions?
What is the proposed enrollment? Both realistic upon, upon allowance and then in the future? Just so we have an idea of what kind of growth we're, you're talking about.
Sure, I'm, I'm happy to address this. I do want to. Point out that again, this is a development code amendment request. A subsequent special use permit. Request will be submitted both by Saint Clair's and Incline Village, or I'm sorry, Saint Clair's and Village Church. And I am actively working on putting those proposals together. So I'm aware of the student. Population that they're requesting with the SUP. So Saint Clair's is going to request a population, a student enrollment capacity of 60 students. And that is. Students that can fit in their existing location. No additional footprint is requested with the SUP that I will be submitting. Same with Incline Village, their requested use is a capacity of 186 students. They have an existing special use permit that allows up to 50 children for their daycare preschool currently. And so. That number of 186 includes. The required staff and, and then existing 50 of allowed. Daycare preschool students. Again, all located in the existing facilities and buildings and no additional footprint.
Were there any other options presented other than placing it in this neighborhood?
There, there were no options available. I do want to point out that. Co-locating schools in, in existing facilities that are greatly underutilized during. The day. Aligns with. Both the regional plan and the Tahoe area plan. To repurpose buildings and lessen the impact on the environment by requiring construction of new buildings.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have any other comments from APC members in the room? How about online?
Oh yeah, this is Susan Chandler.
Oh yeah, this is Susan Chandler. Um, I do have some concerns about this. Um, I guess the major concern is that we're really not talking about schools in general. We're talking about private schools. And those private schools will be charging tuition, uh, which in my mind kind of makes it into a business as well as a school. I would be very concerned about how it affects the public school system. Uh, you're talking about uh, I guess the number was was like uh two hundred and forty students, uh, which means that the local public school system is gonna lose the state and government contribution for two hundred and forty students, and that's going to have a concern on the public system in Incline Village. So I hope that uh we we think about this one because uh I'm a proponent of public education, and to me, this is possibly going to hurt public education in Incline Village. Thank you.
I would love to address your concern, Ms. Chandler, if I have
Go ahead.
The permission.
Anne Marie.
Thank you. This is Anne Marie Lane from Dow. Um, I I would love to address the impact of public schools because that is a real concern. Um, although the TRPA code definition of schools includes both secular and denominational schools, the Tahoe area plan fails to identify or address faith-based education within the community. So Chapter Six of the Public Service um and Facilities of the Tahoe Area Plan provides a policy context for future public and quasi-public facilities, and it provides the basic information about existing and planned public facilities such as schools, but it does not provide an overview or discussion about private schools. Um, so um the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act of two thousand is a civil rights law that protects individuals and religious assemblies and institutions from discriminatory and duly burdensome land use regulations. And it provides protections against land use regulations that impose a burden on religious exercise, unequal treatment of religious assemblies or institutions, and zoning laws, um denominational discrimination, et cetera. So ultimately, I would I would like to be very clear that this amendment is not specifically for faith-based education or private schools. It is, there is no separation in the Tahoe area plan. It is for for schools in general. There is no separation from that. And denying a um development code amendment to um based on a potential negative impact to public schools, whether the potential impact is perceived or real, would be a clear violation of um the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act. Um, that being said, I would like to provide some additional information, Mrs. Chandler. Um, Ms. Chandler, my apologies. Um Saint Clair's has been operating this private Catholic school for over five years. The students that they currently have, um, which their current enrollment is forty-two, thirty-seven of them live in in Incline Village. So they are serving the communities that that is around them immediately. These are students who um would not be attending public schools regardless. These are students who would be driving to the nearest Catholic school, um, which is um, the closest one is in Reno, or they would be homeschooling. And so um, I think there is a perceived um notion that it would have a a negative impact on public schools. Um, but I I'd like to provide one more outlook on that. So we've talked about the increase, um, a a remarkable increase in demand in private school. And where a school has a monopoly or a captive market, it is less likely that a school will respond to its students' needs. In contrast, where families have a choice of schools, they will select the one that best meets their needs. I believe that this proposed development code amendment provides potential beneficial impact, wherein schools compete with each other to offer the highest quality of education. My hope is that I addressed your um concerns, and I'm happy to expand if anybody else has additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Anne Marie. I, yes, I I appreciate the information. I can hear your strong interest in this item. Um, I would just, in the interest of time, if we could keep the answer to the question presented, that would be very helpful. Um, Ms. Chandler, are you satisfied with that answer? Or can we move on? I I believe Steve also has his hand raised.
Yeah, you can you can certainly move on. I'm not a hundred percent satisfied with the a- answer, but I I I understand where the presenter is coming from, so thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, John.
This is John Marshall, General Counsel. I just wanted to provide the APC with just a little guidance on uh any sort of legal bars. There's nothing in the ordinance presented to you that uh is a violation of any federal law regarding religious um protection. Um, I would recommend that if you uh are looking at the basic land use issues, um, that you avoid justifying the um decision based on um a perceived difference between public and private schools. Um, the question really is, do you want schools of any kind in this regulatory area? Whether it be public or private. Um, and that's really the question before you, and I think as you've heard from various folks, there's, oh, it's open to debate. So that's the policy question before you.
Thank you. Appreciate the clarification. Steve, I see you have your hand raised.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. Steve is chair for the record. Um, Mr. Marshall, thank you for that clarification on the legal issue. I do think there is a legal issue out there as Ms. Lane has described, but that's not the issue that's before us today, and I think it was also important, and Ms. Lane pointed it out, that there are existing uh school uses at these sites that have been permitted uh in one way, shape, or form. And now we come to the idea of needing a um an area plan amendment to allow consideration of the applications that Ms. Lane described that may be going forward to Washoe County, and probably back to TRPA as well. I just want, I didn't see it in uh in Courtney's uh presentation, but there was an item on the last Regional Plan Committee uh TRPA on the twenty-seventh of March where this was discussed by members of the RPC. And the point of this is that, you know, I've read all the public comments. Uh, they're certainly mixed, but uh I'm persuaded that because requires a special use permit eventually, that there will be additional opportunities for public comment and and public hearings, et cetera. So um, I'm comfortable with with uh with where this is going. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Steve. Do we have any other comments or questions? Go ahead, John.
Um, Courtney, what's the um the practical effect of the amendment? How many parcels actually would qualify for to be converted into a school?
Go back to that slide really quick. So um
Yeah, it seems pretty limited.
Yes, so that was actually rather strategic when we met with uh Ms. Lane was the concern um really trying to narrow the scope of exactly your, to your point, where could a school go in in that regulatory zone? And if it was to go everywhere, that's a a much higher threshold of environmental review and um obviously associated impacts. Thank you so much. I believe it's on 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 your screen now. Um, so essentially, it's three, it's only going to be um, this amendment would only allow for this use type to be on parcels three acres or more. And so those parcels highlighted in yellow there are the parcels where um it would um, the school use type could occur. Um, something to note, the three uh parcels uh to the the west there are all publicly owned, um either by Washoe County, Evget, or the state. Um, and only three parcels remaining are those that um the subject applicants, uh Saint Fran- uh Saint Francis and Village Church.
Thank you, Courtney.
Any additional questions from the APC? Okay, thank you. Great discussion, everybody. And let's move on now to public comment on this item. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov, and in the calendar, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, April tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. There you'll find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. If any member of the public wishes to address the APC, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone. And you'll be called on and unmuted by a TA- TRPA staff member. Do we have any public comments in the room today? Yes, please come forward to the podium. Thank you. If you could, please turn your mic on. For the record, thank you. Uh, can you hear me?
Um, my name is Sean Comstock, and um I live for the past thirty-three years in the Wood Creek area. I have been a neighbor of both churches. They've both been there um for fifty years, the churches, and some of the comments over the last meetings have said um that there's been no problems. The churches um for the last years, on Sundays, we hear their beautiful bells, and it's for an hour. That on Sundays, they have their participants, and then they leave. I have been through two major remodels with the church. In two thousand and nineteen, we received a letter that the church was gonna do another remodel. The project description said the applicant is proposing to add office and classroom space to the existing church. The proposed expansion will not result in any intensification of the existing use, but will facilitate classroom offices and for the use of administration purposes. Great. The kids could come after school and on Wednesdays go to their church faith-based education on Wednesday afternoons. Neighborhood didn't think a thing of it. Great. History. We get a letter from Bridget Cornell, your associate and 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 person that works with you, that a a school has come over from King's Beach, and they want to now become a Catholic school. Temporary permit. Fine, six months, then another temporary permit. And we're like, oh, my gosh. We start emailing Bridget Cornell and letting her know about the increased noise, the increased traffic, the increased trash. She says, don't worry, it's temporary. It's temporary. Well, another year goes by. They've had four temporary six-months permits. We received these in the letter from Dow Engineering. Meeting, neighborhood meeting, maybe, maybe not. All the comments on the first neighborhood meeting was if you look at the comment cards, they're from children from the school. They're from people who don't even live in our neighborhood. Nobody got these. Four of us got these. I went around to the neighbors, and I went and I got um uh a petition. Fifty plus of us signed a petition that actually live in the Wood Creek neighborhood, that we do not want full-time K through twelve schools at both sides. Dow Engineering gives us this. These are the dates of the meeting, TRPA, Washoe County. If you look at Courtney Waich's um schedule, September twenty-seventh, TRPA meeting last year is not on this Dow Engineering report that they pu- put at the neighborhood meeting. Nothing was right to us neighbors at all. If you please look at Wayne Ford's letter in those, in that huge packet, Wayne is a neighbor. He's a residential planner. He will show you step by step how this was presented to our neighborhood the wrong way. And please, it should not go any further from this planning commission to the governing board. You folks really need to see this. How many of you have actually been on Mount Rose Highway, which is our evacuation route, with these two schools coming and going, activities
Ms. Comstock, if you could please wrap up your comments.
I'm sorry, I'm very nervous about it. I've already submitted all the things that we could have. Please take a look.
Submit it to Catherine. Okay, thank you very much. Thanks for your comments. Do we have any other comments in the room? Yes, come ahead.
Tim Gilbert, the Village Church. I'm an elder at the church and uh trying to get a school started. And uh I'm in the very beginning of the process, um just to add a little more history. We did go throughout the town and look for uh appropriate places that we could increase the level of our preschool. We have a a preschool already, been active for over twenty years. And it's a Christian preschool, so those little kids get introduced to Jesus Christ, and that's that's where our heart is in all of this. And I know this is just for schools only, but the reason for our application is that. First of all, the costs of the places that we looked at was large. And they, none of the uh facilities that we looked at really could accommodate what we wanted to do with the preschool and a playground, all the things that we already have on our on our property. So that's when we went, when we first approached the county, we wanted to add on to our building to do this. That is not what we are pursuing and doing now. We're pursuing having the use approved so that we can use our existing facility to house um grades greater than the preschool that's already existing for us. Um, so we have, there's two of us applicants, but we're slightly different in that way. But the bottom line is what I said earlier. We want to teach kids about Jesus Christ, want them to grow up to have a relationship with them and that with him, and that's that is our motivation. One of the things that we teach, and one of the things that if you have friends that are Christians that you know that their intention, that they live to be good neighbors, and that's what we want to do. We would be teaching those little ones that are in our care to be good neighbors, and we would respond in like ways to the to the comments that are being brought up by our neighbors. So I'm not saying that T- TRPA can lean on that, but that is a that is a true part of all of it. Um, we wanted to do this for a very long time. It's been a good idea for us for a very long time. We just now are able to do it. Um, it doesn't change our footprint. We want to use the existing facility to do this, and that's the same thing going on with Saint Clair's as well. Um, thank you for all the work that you guys do and for the time today.
Thank you, Tim. Do we have any public comments online? Oh, we have another in the room. My apologies. Please come to the podium.
We're good. My name is Scott Comstock. I'm a resident of the Tahoe Wood Creek Regulatory Zone. I support school choice as well as faith-based education. However, our neighborhood is not zoned to house schools. All of the schools in Incline Village are located in a central area of town that are easily serviced by the North Lake Tahoe Fire Department, Washoe County Sheriff's Department simultaneously in case of emergency. The town is currently working on a wildfire evacuation plan as we speak. With these two schools located adjacent to a wildfire evacuation route with up to a hundred and twenty students each, I see the numbers have gone up, they will certainly have to totally revamp their wildfire evacuation plan. The Saint Francis of Assisi Church and Village Church have hired a professional land use planning firm, Dow Engineering, to push this rezoning of six parcels in our residential neighborhood. They're a well-oiled machine that has an organized letter-writing and public comment campaign with opinions that don't reflect the feelings of the Washoe County taxpayers that live in the Tahoe Wood Creek Regulatory Zone. Right from the start, Dow Engineering invited the required property owners of the neighborhood to a neighborhood meeting and filed the paperwork for the proposed zoning change within days. The comment cards were passed out at the end of the neighborhood meeting and were never explained. Dow said, don't worry, all of your live comments are being recorded or taped to be reviewed later. Somehow, the data collected from the neighbors' cards included comments from many parents of current students, founders, students and teachers of the proposed school who do not live in the neighborhood. founders, students and teachers of the proposed school who do not live in the neighborhood, shockingly in favor of their schools. Please listen to the recording of the first neighborhood meeting from June second, two thousand twenty-three to get an accurate depiction of the overwhelming opposition to the rezoning. There's also a petition that's signed by over fifty residents of the Wood Creek neighborhood that says they're strongly opposed to this rezoning. Both churches appear to be extremely confident that the rezoning will be adopted. Back in August of two thousand twenty-three, the proposed schools made announcements that were expanding their enrollments and accepting applications for new students. They erected, erected signage, released information on the community, to the community, and even held a ribbon-cutting ceremonies. Residents worry that they're treating the zoning change as a mere formality, more of an annoyance than anything. They seem to be disrespecting the process and in turn disrespecting the agencies involved. Please rethink this rezoning proposal. Do some independent studies and help them find a location that's properly zoned for schools. Dow does a very good job of making it look like this is supported, but in reality, it is not. Please vote no. Remember, this is not a vote for or against school choice. It is a vote for or against rezoning a residential neighborhood to put the schools in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Do we have any other public comment in the room? Seeing none, do we have any public comments online?
Madam Chair, we have one hand raised so far online. The hand up is Paige Rudehouse. Paige, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, good morning. My name is Paige Rudehouse. I am the Executive Director and also the founder of St. Clair's. Just want to give you a little background about who we are and what we're doing in our community. We're a small Catholic Montessori school founded by parishioners. My husband and I are also parishioners of St. Francis Catholic Church. We operate the school as a ministry of the church and are seeking to be allowed to permanently operate in our spiritual home to provide a religious education to the children of our community. Access to the sacraments of Holy Communion and confession, as well as the opportunity to participate in adoration of the Blessed Sacrament, are essential components of Catholic education that only take place within our Catholic home. We are a five-oh-one, C-three nonprofit, pre-K-through-eight Catholic school. We've been serving the North Tahoe area for five and a half years. The first four years, we operated out of a different religious community, the Hebrew Congregation of North Tahoe. We are operated as a small private licensed school and exempt school by the Nevada Department of Education. And we currently serve twenty families and forty-two students. We're also a licensed childcare provider, serving the community by offering childcare for children as young as two and a half, which is a critical infrastructure component for working parents, as this is not provided by our public schools. Our Montessori school enriches our community by providing access to a world-renowned education model that is based on a self-paced differentiated learning model, which is great for students with learning differences. We charge less than half the tuition charged by the other private schools such as Lake Tahoe School and T in our area. We also offer aggressive financial aid. It's awarded to enable families with financial hardship to attend. Currently, twenty-five percent of the students that attend St. Clair's receive full financial aid scholarships. As Anne Marie said, we serve our local community. Thirty-seven of forty-two students and their families are residents of Incline Village. Allowing St. Clair's to operate at St. Francis Church optimizes the use of a building that is already functioning as a community-use building. Hundreds of people come and go from our church on a weekly basis. The students and staff use the building from eight fifteen to two fifty during the week, a time during which the church doesn't have much use. After school, after the school day, the parish comes alive again with ministry meetings and faith formation activities, weddings, funerals, et cetera. There is a huge precedent in Washoe County for co-locating Catholic schools with Catholic churches. All four Catholic schools in Reno's are co-located within a Catholic church. And the reason is that an essential part of Catholic education is participation in the sacraments that only take place within our spiritual home. We do have a robust emergency operations plan, currently eighty-seven pages long. It's been fully vetted by local law enforcement and fire. We've worked extensively with Lieutenant Peter Sewell at Washoe Sheriff, as well as with Fire Inspector Jeffrey Smith at North Tahoe to create the plan and then to review it annually. Emergency services are aware of our presence and location and are confident in their ability to respond in the event of an emergency. Because there are far less people on church property during school hours than during the church's major services, our presence during the school week does not pose an impediment to area evacuations. The bottom line is if it isn't safe to have our small school operate at St. Francis during non-peak church hours, then it also isn't safe for parishioners to gather each weekend by the hundreds at Mass. I urge you to approve this amendment so that we can continue to exist. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Rudehouse. Do we have any other public comments online?
Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised online. Okay.
Thank you, Catherine. This closes the public comment portion of this item. And APC, we have, go ahead, Eric. Yes.
Thank you. I'd like to come back to what John reminded us, that this is about a rezoning of whether this use isn't appropriate in this regulatory zone. There are a lot of residential regulatory zones throughout Incline Village where you may have some really good questions about, is this spot legitimate? As you saw on the map, this is a location that's right at a major crossway. It's limited to the larger parcels. The analysis of whether this location as a regulatory zone is appropriate for a school has been done. And it has been concluded by Washoe County, at least, that it's an appropriate spot for a school. A lot of the comments that we've heard today are relevant to what might happen next if this eventually goes forward, and that's the special use permit. So I don't know how many people here are familiar with Washoe County's special use permit process. So I thought I'd throw that out real quickly. A lot of the concerns we had, we heard here today are extremely legitimate. A lot of the uber positivity of the applicants may not be appropriate. We do understand that that is a little off-putting when people come forward and it just sounds like they've already, they've already won. That's really frustrating to the community and, and we get that. Let's be reminded that our Washoe County Special Use Permit Process is robust. We commonly apply significant conditions to all approvals. Conditions like hours of operation, lighting, noise, that you have to come back again every so often and see if you're meeting it. We don't know what's going to happen with this special use permit process, but it will be robust. And there will be significant conditions if this goes forward and if this reaches that process. It's, it's it will include significant public input. And I can imagine from what we've heard here today, it will include a lot of neighbors showing up to make sure that their concerns are addressed, mitigated, or if they can't be, that this simply doesn't go through. It is not guaranteed with, if we make this zoning amendment, if this happens and goes through and the governing board approves it. The continuation of these two uses is not guaranteed. They are operating on temporary permits for a reason. It's temporary because it might not be appropriate to be permanent. Or that the way they're operating currently might have to be significantly mitigated to make it appropriate. And that's what we would find out through a special use permit process. So that's the thing that makes me more comfortable with this rezoning. I have a hard time on, on the, on, on the basis of just the rezoning of looking at this location and saying that that's not appropriate to allow schools. It's really appropriate in its location and its functionality and the way you get in and out there. It's appropriate. So I, and I know about the analysis that went into it. And so I, I'm gonna, you know, I'm gonna have to support this. But I, I would like people to feel comfortable in understanding just how robust Washoe County's special use permit process is and will be for any applicant that wants to go forward with this process. So thank you for listening to me. That's what I am.
Thank you, Eric, and I think it's important to hear the Washoe County perspective as well. Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments from APC members before we move to the motions?
Mr. Young, I assume that the public would be noticed through the special use process, correct?
There is a noticing that occurs for the public use permit. And then what you heard about the neighborhood meeting is Washoe County's pre-application process where the applicant has to conduct their own neighborhood meeting. And since we've heard about some of the issues that may have been involved with this one, we'll be on top of those issues and make sure those don't happen again at the next neighborhood meeting.
Okay, with that, are there any other comments from APC online?
Yes, I, I think the comments of the special use process are really important to this because what we would potentially be approving today would not approve a specific use in the future without that process. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Is there a member of the APC who is willing to make a motion on this item?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the required findings as described in Attachment D, including a finding with no seen effect for adoption on the area plan amendment as described in the staff summary.
I would second that motion.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Tracy, may we go to a roll call vote?
Ms. Chandler?
No.
Ms. Setza?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Madam Chair, that motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy.
I would like to make motion to recommend adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four dash to be determined, amending ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh-six to amend the Washoe County Tahoe area plan as shown in Attachment C.
I will second that motion as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Tracy, may we have a roll call?
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
No.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Ms. Ferris?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Ms. Setza?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
That motion also passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Thank you to the members of the APC and to the public. Turn to me. I'll take us now to item six B, discussion and possible recommendation on proposed revisions to environmental threshold carrying capacities, threshold standards for the A restoration of stream environment zones SC eleven through SC thirteen, B Tahoe Yellowcrest VP twenty-one, and C aquatic invasive species WQ nine through WQ fourteen. And I'll pass this over to Dan Seegan for his presentation. Thank you, Dan.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the committee. My name is Dan Seegan, TRPA staff. And today, it's my pleasure to bring back an item to you that you last heard in October of twenty-three regarding changes to four threshold standards. We brought back two of those unchanged to you today. One with grammatical revisions and one with a substantive revision. So I'll give a brief overview of the process and then I'll walk you through the recommended changes to those standards. Thank you. You're one step ahead of me. So threshold standards, as you all know, are at the top of our regulatory pyramid. They guide everything that the agency does. They form our core mission and the mission of the Environmental Improvement Program. Next slide, please. So threshold standards are those big goals that we're trying to achieve, both through our regional plan and through the implementing projects of the Environmental Improvement Program. Those standards are things like Lake Clarity. They are things like restoring our wetlands within our region, preserving habitat for important species and preserving air quality within our region. These are our large goals. The vast majority of those goals date back to nineteen eighty-two. And we've been in a multi-year process to revise and update those goals along with numerous partners. Next slide, please. So these are just some of the partners that have been involved in that process. So the, the governing board first identified the updating of the threshold standards as a core strategic initiative for the agency in two thousand and fifteen. We have been working diligently with the Tahoe Science Advisory Council on a comprehensive process to both define what threshold standards are and the role they should play in our system, as well as reviewing all of those standards within our system. We've also been working with the Tahoe Interagency Executive Steering Committee. That's the committee that guides the EIP or the Environmental Improvement Program within our region. And the proposals that are brought forward to you today are, were developed by subcommittees of the Tahoe Interagency Executive Steering Committee. So we're working in three subject areas today. Watersheds, or the Tahoe Watershed Improvement Group, developed the SEZ standard. That's the Stream Environment Zone Restoration Standard. The Tahoe Yellowcrest Adaptive Management Working Group developed the Tahoe Yellowcrest Proposed Revisions. And the AIS Coordinating Committee developed the two revisions to the AIS standards. Next slide, please. As you all know, the, the Tahoe Science Advisory Council set specific things that we should seek to attain in our new threshold standards or criteria through which we use to develop those standards. So the original set of standards that we adopted in nineteen eighty-two included, included a broad mix of things such as regulatory controls, aspirational goals, and specific things to be achieved. And in the Tahoe Science Advisory Council's review of how other systems establish their goals, these are the three core things that they outlined that we should be seeking to do with our threshold standards. And I'm going to actually work from the bottom of the list first. The first thing they said is focus on their outcomes, focus on the things you really want to achieve, not the mechanisms to get there. So the threshold standard should focus on Lake Clarity, not the mechanism to get there, something like street sweeping or installing BMPs. Second, they should be specific and measurable. And those two go together because we have a suite of threshold standards today that don't actually establish a finite endpoint at which we can all assess, have we achieved our goal or not? So in short, there's ambiguity. And when the agency does its threshold evaluation every four years, we have numerous standards where there could be broad disagreement and reasonable disagreement about, have we done enough to achieve this standard? And basically, the Science Council challenged us and challenged you to come up with specific and measurable standards in each of these categories. And many of the proposals we're bringing forward, or, or actually, excuse me, not many, all of the proposals we are bringing forward are in line with these three core elements of what a threshold standard should be. Next slide, please. So I'm going to briefly walk through each of the proposed standards, the proposed changes and highlight where we've made modifications since we last presented these to you in October of twenty-three. So the first is stream environment zones. Next slide, please. So as you all know, stream environment zones is a term unique to Tahoe. We use it as sort of an all-encompassing term. It includes wetlands, riparian areas, streams, meadows. And the initial standard we established basically set a number of targets for restoration of these stream environment zones. And we've used this slide many times before. But basically, when we, the last time we had the thresholds peer-reviewed, a number of the peer reviewers called out the fact that we had this sort of myopic a number of the peer reviewers called out the fact that we had this sort of myopic view of stream and meadows where they're either functioning or not functioning. And in the real world, we actually know there's tons of gray. And we previously updated our Environmental Improvement Program to address those, recognizing not just full restoration, but functional enhancement. And many of the activities that partners do today on our wetlands and in our meadows are actually considered functional enhancement, not full restoration. So you can think of things like conifer encroachment into our meadow systems, where we'll have partners go out and take out those conifers that are reducing groundwater and restore function, but that's not considered full restoration. Next slide, please. So some years ago, we got a grant from the EPA that essentially helped us address this shortcoming or this sort of myopic view that was focusing only on area and not on quality. And we developed what we called the SEZ Condition Index, which basically integrates these two things. So it identifies a number of factors related to the function of a stream or a meadow system, incorporates those. We get a general quality score from that. We multiply it by the area of SEZ within our region or within, sorry, we do for each SEZ, excuse me, let me correct that, for each SEZ, we measure the quality of it and the total area of it. And we multiply those two together and we get this condition index for that. We sum that for all of our SEZ within the region. And we get the overall condition of our streams and meadows within the Tahoe Basin. Next slide, please. And all this information, I should highlight, all this information is online, including all the surveys that contributed to identifying how well each was functioning. We've got pictures of many of them and we've got pre and post restoration on that website as well, in case you're interested in checking it out. This is a standard for which no proposed change is being made, but we've suggested that we want to enhance the overall quality and function of meadows and wetlands from 79% of the regional possible total to 88% of the regional possible SEZ Condition Index. So this is fundamentally, we are, we've almost attained our last restoration goal. We are now doubling down on that and saying restoration continues to be important and we want to continue to support and account for these projects as part of the EIP. So that's our, the first standard, which is unchanged. The second one is the Tahoe Yellowcrest Standard. Next slide, please. And so the basic story of our, the existing Tahoe Yellowcrest Standard, which establishes a goal of 26 sites, was, this was established after the 1981 monitoring season. And we had only three years of data on the species dynamics. We basically knew very little about it. And we picked the highest number of sites that we'd seen in those three years and said, that should be our goal for all time. What we didn't know at that time was, no, no, you're totally on it. This is great. I feel like I'm giving you a signal behind. So what we've since learned through subsequent monitoring is that lake level has a dramatic impact on the number of population sites that we see occupied. And in short, when the lake is really high, we have far fewer occupied sites. And the lake, when the lake is low, we need to be protecting far more sites because there's more opportunity for colonization. And this, that understanding is incorporated both into the species conservation strategy that allowed us to avoid listing of Tahoe Yellowcrest through Fish and Wildlife. And we are now proposing to bring that forward as part of the threshold standard. And this is one of the standards where the substance of the standard has not been changed since what you've seen in October. And I'm calling the substance of the standard, the number of occupied population sites that we are targeting. But we have tried to modify the text of the standard to be a little bit more coherent to an average reader of it. And so you can see the proposed modification there. So we are now saying maintain at least the number of occupied Tahoe Yellowcrest survey sites for each lake level as established in the table below. So that's the change here, as opposed to the October version had, we did not really revise the text of the current standard as much, so it seemed to make a little bit less sense with the incorporation of a table. Hopefully you agree, but again, happy to take feedback on potential modifications that would make it more comprehensible. Next slide, please. So the last group of standards that we are proposing revisions to are the AIS Control Standards. And you'll remember that at the October hearing, these are the ones that garnered the most attention. And you asked that the Threshold Update Initiative Stakeholder Working Group take a better look or take a second look at these before bringing it back to you. And so that's what we've done. So these, the six standards on the board today are standards that the Science Council highlighted as not meeting this specific and measurable end objective. So these are the existing control standards. And you see they use words like reduce or abate without actually specifying how much of a reduction in abundance or distribution would satisfy our goal, or how much of an abatement of the harmful ecological or social or public health impacts would be enough. So this is an area we've targeted to try to set specific and measurable goals that everyone can look at it and say, yes, we've invested enough and achieved our goal, or no, we have not achieved our goal. There's still far more work to do. Next slide, please. So as you know, there are two aspects to our AIS program. There's the prevention program, stop new AIS from getting into the lake. We have a threshold standard for that. We are not proposing any modifications for that standard. It will remain in place. The standards today are really focusing on that control side. Next slide, please. And these are the standards that we proposed to you in October. We said that we should put all known AIS or aquatic invasive plant infestations in the surveillance category in the main lake and associated areas. And we establish a second threshold standard for the Tahoe Keys consistent with the work being done there. That would be a 75% reduction in a aquatic invasive plant abundance by 2045. And the questions you raised were twofold. Next slide, please. So when I say, actually, so I guess there's three. So there were, what happens to standards, what happens to aquatic invasive species for which we are not setting standards? And I think, you know, the thought that was raised at this meeting was we are doing work on Asian clams today. We just had New Zealand mud snails identified. So what does it mean that we're not proposing standards for those today? Are those falling off our radar? And that's, I think, both, what, why did we, why did we recommend for plants only today? And then what happens to the other one? And then the second or the third question on the board that you asked us to bring to the Threshold Update Initiative Stakeholder Working Group was, why a date of 2045 for the Tahoe Keys? Given that the Controlled Methods Test is not yet done and we don't have a plan to attain that goal by 2045? And does that send the right message that we're arbitrarily picking a date to attain that? And what that would do to the overall process? And those are the questions that we brought to the Stakeholder Working Group on Valentine's Day of this year. Next slide, please. And so we had a long conversation at that meeting about why identify standards for some and not others. And, you know, in part, that was rooted to specific and measurable objectives, outcome based. But really, what we came up with, or what the group came up with, was that we should be considering a four-part test to identify when it may be appropriate to set a threshold standard. And I want you to to walk you through some of that discussion. And then the committee's direction to us to incorporate this into an overall process to make it more explicit, both to you and to other stakeholders within the region, where different values or issues are in the broad spectrum of, is this just an issue of concern? Or are we ready to adopt a threshold standard? So the committee first said, we need to have a clear definition of what the issue is we want to solve. That seems simple enough. Second, we need to be able to quantify the extent of the issue or problem. Third, we need to be able to define where we want to go or what we think the solution looks like. That, again, is consistent with this idea of specific and measurable. We need to be able to both measure the problem and define what we think the solution looks like in those terms. And then fourth and finally, we need to be able to identify a viable way to get there. So as you remember, the thresholds are at the top of our regulatory pyramid. And one of the findings that you were asked to make as part of approving anything is that it'll be consistent with achieving and maintaining those and that the regional plan and the Environmental Improvement Program together can achieve and maintain those. And the reason that was highlighted here is for things like New Zealand mud snails, where we are working to both quantify the extent of the problem and to identify opportunities to alleviate that problem or to address the problem. We don't have viable control alternatives right now that we can use. So for things like that, it's, the thought was that it would be best kept within the AIS Coordinating Committee and within their Strategic Action Plan, where they have goals for both surveying to better understand the extent of the problem and then also testing mechanisms to better control that problem. And I think you can view all of that work as leading up to potentially identifying a threshold standard if and when we can satisfy these four criteria. Next slide, please. So what happens basically in advance? Do we just forget about those? And the answer is certainly not. So the AIS Coordinating Committee continues to work on all AIS, not just the AIS for which we are proposing threshold standards for. And within our regulatory documents, the suggestion that was that we continue to include those in the goals and policies of the regional plan. And we can include both, you know, the desire to monitor as well as to address the concerns related to those and prevent further spread. And that we should continue to maintain those within the goals and policies of the regional plan and regularly revisit those goals and policies and say, is it now ripe to adopt a threshold standard for this specific issue? Next slide, please. So the third and final issue that you referred to the Threshold Update Initiative Stakeholder Working Group was, was the 2045 date appropriate for the Keys? Given that the CMT or the Controlled Methods Test is not yet done? And would it be better to wait until the test is complete and we have a viable plan to achieve it? And then align the attainment date for our plan with that one, excuse me, leave or align the attainment date in the threshold standard with the plan if and when we have it adopted? That's also the model we followed for the VMT Threshold Standard we bought, brought forward in 21 where we identified a plan to achieve it. And then we adopted the plan and the attainment date in the threshold standard. And I think basically, the committee agreed with the guidance that we, we sort of heard discussion of in October, that it would be inappropriate to identify a date in the threshold standard in advance of identifying that through an actual planning process. So we're proposing to remove that. Next slide, please. So the proposed standards related to AIS that we're bringing forward today are twofold. The first is unchanged. This is the no active infestations outside of the Tahoe Keys. And the second has a couple modifications that I just want to take a moment to walk you through that came out of that committee and then went back to the AIS Coordinating Committee. Next slide, please. Next slide, or maybe it's animated? Oh, perfect. So this is the, I've highlighted in red the five changes to the proposed standard that have come out of that discussion and numbered them here. And I'll give a little bit of context for each. So the first was the committee suggested, and then the AIS Coordinating Committee agreed, that we should be evaluating overall abundance based on a running average abundance. So we're doing surveys every year. And we shouldn't allow environmental variability within an individual year to unduly influence our assessment of attainment of the standard. So we'd include a rolling average. The second was, for clarification, we added the word plant ahead so that we're specifying that this is actually aquatic invasive plant abundance. That is the subject of the standard. The third change is to clarify that reductions above 75% would also be consistent with achieving and maintaining the standard. So we added the words by a minimum of 75% rather than by 75%. The fourth, I already discussed, which is the removal of the target attainment date. And the fifth and final change is to include the baseline year against which we are going to measure progress within the standard itself. Again, this is consistent with the guidance from the Science Advisory Council that we provide as much of the specific and measurable within the standard itself and leave less ambiguity. So those are the five proposed changes to that standard. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions on any of the proposed modifications or any of the standards, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Dan. That's a great presentation and appreciate you guys going back to the working group and really digging into this and then coming back to us. Do I have any comments from APC members? Go ahead, Eric.
Thank you so much. Just a couple of quick questions. I'm sure you have answers. Thank you. On that yellow water crest thing, it's, it is so interesting and almost like we should have guessed, right? That water level plays a role. Sorry, that water level can play a role in, in where it's showing up and its ability to invade. I was curious if it's surviving under the water and/or if it needs to re-invade. When the water levels go down, is it re-invading into those spots or is it, is it surviving under the water and then flourishing when the water goes down?
I am by no means an expert in Tahoe Yellowcrest. My understanding is that the seeds survive under and then it's Garth may have a better sense.
That's okay. I was, I was purely curiosity. The others are a little bit more relevant perhaps. You talked about, I, it was important to all of us that everything be measurable. So thanks for doubling down on that. You mentioned that we wouldn't establish the threshold until if and when those four standards that you mentioned could be done. Now I was curious why there would be an if. It seems like you would want to just keep the working away until you were able to get to those measurables and then start measuring it. That's not something you'd want to give up on. And so I was curious if there is a time when, foreseeable time, when you just wouldn't be able to get there, when you actually wouldn't be able to meet those four standards? Is that possible?
I mean, I think it's certainly possible in the sense that maybe we can't identify a viable way to get there.
That's interesting to me. As, it seems like that's something that you wouldn't want to give up on. Especially, you know, you've identified that it exists, right? And so, and, and central to pursuing it and dealing with it is that sense that we can start measuring it and so forth. And the idea that we just wouldn't ever be able to establish a threshold because we can't meet those four standards is that's, that's really fascinating.
I mean, I think I do want to clarify the difference between not trying to address and prevent and establishing a threshold. Because I do think there is a, there, not a fine line, but there is certainly a line there where it doesn't mean that we're not working right. And I think, you know, like New Zealand mud snails are, are a great example there where there's a lot of work being done to prevent spread. But there are known colonizer and invader all over. And no one has, you know, a viable way to remove them yet. And I think, you know, so not having a threshold, like including it as a goal and policy in the regional plan allows us to continue work, working on it and memorialize the intent to work towards, you know, the ultimate goal that I think we have in mind, but that we wouldn't yet adopt a threshold standard until we think that we can actually achieve that goal so that we're not setting up false expectations that these are things that we can do when we're not sure that we actually can accomplish them yet. that these are things that we can do when we we're not sure that we actually can accomplish them yet.
I completely appreciate that. Thanks for the answer. I just want to have it out there that you're that that it's not something that you give up on. That there are, for depending on the species, there are other partners around the US or the world even that can help us deal with this and keep plugging away until you get at it. When a new species is identified, how how does that happen? Is that by accident? Is that through annual survey? How do we come across a new invasive? How was that discovered?
So it was discovered through surveys for other invasive species.
It's great. It's through perhaps the annual survey of what's going on, right? And you might find another one.
This one specifically was a pre-treatment survey is when they discovered the mud snails. So they were looking to treat in the offshore comp the complex off the Keys.
I think that the the key point for me is that when when these really knowledgeable people are out there doing a survey and looking for the specific things that they are included in the survey, they are looking for other things that are out of place and that shouldn't be there. And they're and they're not so focused on the single species that they they have the spreadsheet for that they can't say, oh, wait a minute, that's not supposed to be there. And that they have that knowledge and that and that ability to to do that when they're out on those surveys. I think that's the key point that I wanted to get out to. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then I'm really interested in the 75% mark. I foresee a time when we're at 65 and we have another meeting and say, okay, what happens? We're we're gonna get there. You come and tell us we're almost there. We're gonna do it. Yay. Then then what? We keep, we keep going. We don't stop at 75. And I can foresee a moment sometime around here when we're talking about, okay, congratulations, what's next? We hit our 75. Now what do we do? And so I I love having those numbers. Those are really important to me. But I like to have a sense that they're not the end of the game. And that's all I have.
Just so the the notion that it's not the end of the game has come up with a lot of these threshold standards, especially we've we've talked about the update process. And in other places, we've said it's our intent to review the threshold standard if and when we reach that. And I think the clearest example of that is the SEZ standard that we're asking you to update today. Where, you know, roughly 40 years ago, we said we were going to restore 1,100 acres of SEZ. We're just under that right now. And we're asking you now to basically put that in the rearview mirror and adopt an additional goal for more restoration because we can see ourselves attaining it. And we don't think we've accomplished our goal. So I imagine it would be a similar discussion if and when we hit the 75% or when we hit the 75%.
Go ahead, Gar.
Dan, thank you for all the work that you guys have done on this. I think it's, what you've come up with is 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 really good and it's reflective of all the the great thought that's gone into all this. A few, a few different things, Eric, to respond to you, especially with the 75%. I think it's important in the AIS in in here, it basically says a minimum of 75%. So 75 isn't just the goal. That's that's right where it starts and then and then above. And I agree that these things can be or the thresholds can be modified in the future to to continuously raise. Dan, question, oh, and also with the TYC Tahoe Yellow Crest, it's not just the seeds. The root stock also remains viable underneath the water. Dan, on your proposed standard for SEZ, enhance the quality and function of meadows and wetlands from 79% to 88%. Can you talk a little bit about how you came up with the 88% number?
So we, so the we developed it through a bottom-up process through that watershed working group. So basically, the inventory that we used to come up with a condition index identifies the the condition of each SEZ in the region today. And we asked the the partners on that group to identify projects that they would like to see incorporated in a 20-year restoration target. Or in addition to the projects that are already listed in the EIP tracker for which projects are planned. And so then we included all of those in the new restoration target. And then we we did a secondary exploration of the the success in past restoration and identified the likely improvement in functional condition based on having a restoration project. Because we know restoration doesn't get you to 100% of function in general, or if it does, it takes a long time. And so there is a a factor there that says future restoration projects are likely to perform a little bit better than past restoration projects. And that helped us arrive at that 88% calculation. But ju- just to be clear on that, there are no specific prod, while it was built from a bottom-up project-based approach, there are no specific projects that are required to be in there and you can beat that target in a number of different ways.
Do you think it would be beneficial to include the same language with putting a minimum in front of that 88%? To allow, I mean, I I I think that may be a good thing to add. You know, the minimum of 88, knowing that even higher is better.
I do.
Thank you. Sorry, there was one more. I'll have to review my notes. Thank you.
We can come back to you too when you find it. And I've noticed that we have a couple of APC members online with their hands raised. So Jennifer will start with you and then go to Kevin and then Susan.
Thank you. As the Chair of the Threshold Update Initiative Stakeholder Working Group, I wanted to very much thank Dan and the TRPA team for taking the time to put the process on pause last fall and engage the the working group and and what turned out to be really fantastic discussion about the various aquatic invasive species and how we ensure that we don't lose sight of them and where various goals and things belong in the absence of threshold. So I very much appreciate the work that was done and I just wanted to mention that to the TRPA staff. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. All right, Kevin, did you have a comment or a question for Dan?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Dan, really, really great presentation and appreciated the discussion between the members today. Yeah, I was totally supportive of this change towards quality and functionality of an SEZ versus just the area of SEZ. I think that's long overdue and certainly much more relevant. And I was kind of curious, based on this research and new information that we're getting on functionality and quality, do you see potentially in the future of revising how SCZs are identified? Using like maybe different primary, secondary indicators in the future for maybe more like urban settings?
So appreciate the question, Kevin. We talked about it a little bit in the group, but they, so they just completed in 2015, right as we were kicking off the work to identify a condition index score, a project led by Spatial Informatics Group that looked at the indicators and definitions of SEZ. So we did not take a deep dive into that as part of this. But I I think you can imagine as both technologies change and the way that we monitor it changes, we could revisit those definitions and how we identify them in the field.
Okay, thank you, Dan.
Thanks, Kevin. Susan, did you have a comment or a question for Dan?
Yes, I'd like to also agree with Jennifer. I think this process was really quite enlightening and it was very thoughtful. I want to just make a comment about the 75% reduction in the Tahoe Keys. I I think that it's really important to understand that after the first year of the CMT, when we were able to use herbicides, we actually had a reduction of 95% in our invasive species in the areas where the herbicide was used. Therefore, by putting a number like 75% on it, it allows for fluctuations from year to year because we as of yet do not know exactly what kind of methodology that we're going to be able to use in the future. We have to go through the process of finishing the third year this year and then have probably have to go through another EIR, EIS procedure in order to get continuation, to be able to continue the kinds of treatments that we've been using. And because of a baseline being set, which was relatively low because 2021, which was the picture that was showed on the slide, was before we started doing anything with the Controlled Methods test. And we always also have to always remember that the water level is important. The water temperature is important, means the treatment is important. So I think that this statement is very excellent and will meet our needs for many years ahead. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Susan. Garth, were you able to find your last comment? Are you okay?
Yes, I was actually in Exhibit 1 on page 209 in the Proposed Environmental Threshold Carrying capacities, where the table is included now for the Tahoe Yellow Crest. Not related to TYC, but in the line just below under VP22, maintain a minimum of seven Erebus ridgadisma demota population sites. That's a typo. Currently, it's D M O T E. The subspecies or the variant is D M O T A. Thank you.
Good catch. Nice to have a scientist on the APC. Okay, do I have any other members online or in the room who would like to make a comment? Kevin, your hand is still raised. Do you do you have additional comments?
Oh, no, thank you. I'm taken care of. I'll put that down.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chair. Before we make a motion, I I would really like to make a motion, but I would like to do so to include. How would I do this, John, to be able to include making like the the typo modification here? Or is that something that can be done separately or? And and I'd also like to include the word minimum before the 88%.
Should we pause until after public comment to take this question?
You can make that add that into your motion, you know, at that.
Walk you through that, but let's do public comment.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you, Gar. Dan, I did have just a final couple of questions for you. I think I agree with Eric's comments related to AIS and that proposed threshold standard. To me, having it live in the regional plan goals and policies, that makes sense. But I think there is a desire also to have continued effort towards addressing those four questions. And I'm wondering if the working group thought about that or had proposed a way, a mechanism so that we could keep kind of advancing on answering those questions.
So we didn't talk specifically about that in the working group. The working group did provide direction that we develop a process whereby we continually reevaluate and then transparently display to the public where we are with regard to each. So I think we can memorialize that intent with inside of that.
Great, thank you. And I misspoke. I think I said I had two comments, but that was my main one. So I am good. Thank you. All right.
Hillary, if I could just add real quick to Dan's.
Yeah, go ahead, Jennifer.
I do remember, Dan, we did talk about the the other AIS committee actively continuing to work on all of those non-plant issues under their sort of work plan. Am I remembering that correctly? I mean, even though it's falling out of this focus, it's it, and it is in the regional plan. There is still that other AIS working group or committee that it's not dropping off their radar. They are continually trying to strive towards answering those four questions, correct?
That's 100% correct. I mean, being more specific, the committee, I mean, I think was explicit about wanting the subject matter experts to maintain those lists rather than rather than TRPA or some individual agency that wasn't. So it would fall on them to both continue to update where they are relative to threshold standards and communicate that to us. And they're already working on those. So that, you know, the committee expressed continued support for things like the AIS coordinating committee to continue to work on things that works are not threshold standards at the time, but that are covered under goals and policies of the regional plan.
Okay, that's great. So then perhaps in the future, once those questions are tackled, they could be integrated into a future threshold update. Great. Okay, thanks. Do we have any other comments or questions from APC? No? All right, thanks, everybody. So we will now move to public comment on this item. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov. In the calendar, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, April 10, 2024. There you will find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. If any member of the public wishes to address the APC, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. Do we have any public comment in the room? Seeing none, do we have any public comment online?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have two hands raised so far. The first hand up is Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, Chair. Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. Well, what I just heard was the continuing situation where the TRPA is caught up in regulatory capture. That means basically what you move to do is to make sure that, you know, the the agency isn't caught with actually having to declare failure. This presentation is embarrassing. It was about TRPA self-preservation to continue to lower the bar and make sure you don't fail. You you're not really measuring. You're talking about what you're going to do. Quantify the extent of the problem? Are you kidding me? What have you guys been doing for the last 50 years? This is amazing. The tone of this presentation, you guys should be embarrassed. If the TRPA leadership believes that the APC should approve recommendations to the TRPA governing board, every one of the leadership should resign now. Remove target attainment dates? When does this end? This is a failure, you guys. You've got such, you've got this huge bureaucratic machine that talks about self-preservation, not about lake preservation. Rarely do I agree with Mr. Young. I wish every one of you would have asked the same questions. Because I I can't, I I don't know exactly what he's thinking, but he's going down the right track. The AC, the ACP should, APC should table this, send these people back and come up with some measurable dates, times, quantifiable solutions and metrics. This is awful. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
The next hand raised is Ann Nichols. Ann, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yeah, thanks, Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. This kicking the can down the road, there's no enforcement. I mean, right now, you all have approved developing Tahoe Beach Club in those wetlands. You know, there are no BMPs installed at the Boulder Bay Crystal Bay site after over 15 years. There's no enforcement. There's wonderful narrative about, you know, the presentation was just grinding. But where's the real, where is it really happening? What is the, what has really been done? And what about the microplastics? What about the lead cable in the lake? And as we know, with the no net VMT, if there's no enforcement mechanism or no date, it doesn't happen because you guys just keep extending and do workarounds and loopholes. So really, I'd love to see more skepticism from your group. That would be lovely. That would be lovely. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Do we have any other public comments online?
There are no other hands raised to comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. All right. So this closes the public comment portion of this item. Do we have any additional or final comments from A P C members? Jennifer, I see your hand is raised.
Thank you. For the benefit of the A P C in considering what they want to do with this, I would mention something that I don't know got as much discussion, which was the removal of the twenty forty five date from the Tahoe Keys threshold. There was a lot of discussion about this at the threshold update initiative stakeholder working group and a very good reason for removing that twenty forty five is it was too far out there and we certainly didn't want to imply that we were, you know, had all of those years in order to accomplish the goal of what the Tahoe Keys is trying to do right now. We want to keep the, you know, the proverbial pressure on for all the projects and the solutions that could be brought to the invasive species in in the Tahoe Keys and not not imply as a as a as a policy that we've got, you know, decades left to do to address this. We want to address it now. And we felt that twenty forty five is just too far out there. So if that helps folks understand the removal of the twenty forty five, that's some of the background on the discussion. But as Susan mentioned, we don't exactly know what the solutions are because we're still in the testing phase with the proverbial we on what those solutions are. So at some point when we know what the long term plans would be, then I would imagine that we would be reopening this threshold to 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 put some time limited values in there. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer. I think that is helpful. I appreciate the additional explanation. All right. Are there any other final comments before we go to a motion? Hearing none, is there an A P C member who is willing to make a motion on this item?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval of the required findings, attachment B, including a finding of no significant effect.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Eric. Tracy, may we have a roll call? Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Ms. Setzer? Circle back. Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Orling?
Yes.
Ms. Setzer? Got that. Ms. Stoller?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes. Thank you, Tracy. Garth, did you have a question on the second motion?
Yes, as as I stated before, I would like to make a motion, but I'd like to do so with some modifications. Specifically, and I think it should be noted in our packet, the motion references a many ordinance, two thousand nineteen oh two, attachment A. In our packet, it's listed as exhibit one. So I want to make sure that there's no misunderstanding there. And so, John, how how would I just forward with that?
Just go ahead and make the motion and then I think you'll you can then say a specific change on page two oh five to insert the word a minimum of before eighty eight percent and then on page two oh nine, correcting the E to an A on demota.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to recommend adoption of ordinance, two thousand twenty four blank, admitting ordinance, two thousand nineteen oh two, exhibit one, updates to the threshold standards for stream environment zone restoration, two aquatic invasive species control and three Tahoe Yellow Crest conservation with the following additions slash modifications. In exhibit one, page two zero five, in addition, or excuse me, a minimum of before eighty eight percent under item S C eleven and then page two zero nine under item V P twenty two, change the word demote to demota. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Eric. Tracy, roll call, please. Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Mr. Orling?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Ms. Setzer? Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Chief Stephen?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Ms. Stella?
Yes.
The motion also passes. Thank you, Tracy. Thank you, Dan. Okay, have a good afternoon. We are on agenda item number six C. This is the discussion and possible recommendation for technical clarifications to the phase two housing and possible ordinance amendments. Specifically, code of ordinances sections thirty point four point two, B five A and thirty point four point two, B six A regarding mandatory participation in a stormwater collection and treatment system to receive coverage incentives. And section fifty two point three point one regarding reservation of bonus units for affordable and moderate housing. Information can be found on page two hundred and forty three of your packet. And I'll turn this over to Ms. Bettinger to present.
I'm going to interrupt just for a quick second and introduce Graham Saint Michel, who's a new attorney with T R P A, been here for a month.
Yeah, a little over a month.
And he's going to be handling responses to your questions on this item. So please think of some really good questions for him. But Alyssa will be handling the the main presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, members of the committee. My name is Alyssa Bettinger with T R P A staff. And I am here to present the technical correction or technical clarifications to the phase two housing amendments code of ordinances. For those of you who don't remember the phase two housing amendments, we're part or are a part of the Tahoe Living Strategic Priority, which is one of the governing board priorities, looking at how we can update T R P A's policies to better align and encourage the development of affordable and workforce housing. Without this type of housing, there are environmental impacts from more workers having to move out of the basin and commute back in as well as the negative social and economic impacts to our communities. The Tahoe Living Strategic Priority gets a lot of input from our multidisciplinary Tahoe Living Working Group. And we've been analyzing and making policy updates in distinct phases. So back in twenty twenty one, we passed the phase one of our housing amendments, which encouraged accessory dwelling units and property owners to convert old motels to long term housing. We'll talk a little bit more about phase two in the in a minute. Phase three, we are working on, we have, we started working on this this year. And it is really looking at T R P A's development rate systems and sort of identifying the underlying inequities of some of our policies within the region. So the proposal before you today would make two amendments to the code language that was passed by the governing board in December of last year. The phase two amendments were really designed to further implement our regional plan by encouraging compact development in and near our town centers. And we did this by passing incentives that allow more flexibility with coverage, height, parcel level, density and parking, specifically for deed restricted housing or mixed use developments with a hundred percent deed restricted residential component. The technical amendments that are proposed today would further clarify the governing board's intent at that December meeting. They are they're two amendments and they are not substantive code changes. They're again just clarifying the intent. Next slide, please. So the first amendment would is to the first amendment is to chapter thirty and it clarifies that any property that is receiving the coverage incentives that were passed under the phase two amendments would be required to tie into an area wide stormwater treatment system. This amendment is sort of a cleanup. It is removing a an erroneous clause that was left over from an earlier version of the proposal. And then I also want to draw your attention to the errata that was circulated. We are also removing the word or at the end of subsection thirty point four point two point B five A. That requirement is not, you know, the projects would have to meet the requirements in all of these subsections, not just A. So we are requiring or we are removing that word or at the end. Next slide. The next proposed amendment would clarify the distribution of remaining bonus units within the T R P A pool to the affordable, moderate and achievable deed restriction categories. And before I get into the details of that amendment on the next slide, I just want to highlight the number of bonus units that have been utilized in each deed restriction level to date. You can see here that the affordable category has used the majority of units or have have utilized there. Some are still in the going through the permitting process. But you can see here that, you know, four hundred and eighty two affordable units are, you know, have either been built or are going through the permitting process right now. I think there's a common misconception that moderate income units are built more often than affordable units, but our our records show that this is actually not correct and likely because moderate income housing typically qualifies for significantly less federal and state subsidies than affordable housing does. So just want to point that out. Next slide, please. So in December, the governing board made a motion to limit the number of achievable housing units to twenty five percent of the pool. But in doing so, they left the remaining seventy five percent of the pool available for both affordable and moderate income units. And this was a change from prior to December, when affordable housing had its own sort of dedicated set aside from the T R P A pool fifty percent. And again, although moderate income housing projects, you know, are less common, there was concern that this left the potential for moderate income projects to access a larger share of the bonus units previously reserved exclusively for affordable housing. And in going back and listening to the the December meeting recording and and looking at the minutes, staff does believe that the grouping of affordable and moderate income projects was an unintentional result. And and the approved language and rather than an affirmative policy choice by the board. And so as a result of this, we are proposing that the the code language be amended to confirm that fifty percent of the pool be reserved exclusively for affordable housing. And that would leave twenty five percent available for moderate income housing, which the affordable bucket could pull from. And then twenty five percent would be available for achievable housing. But the affordable and moderate income units could pull from that sort of top tier bucket as well. So and those are shown on the bullets on this slide. Next slide, please. So with that, it was just a quick presentation, those two amendments. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Alyssa. Do we have any questions or comments from A P C members in the room? Doesn't look like it. How about online? Crystal, I see your hand raised.
Yes, hi, it's Emily Setzer. I had to join from my phone so you all could hear me better.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Alyssa. That was really helpful. So just to be just to clarify, so if somebody in an area where multifamily is allowed outside of a town center, they would, if they wanted to take advantage of the seventy percent coverage, they would have to meet after this proposed amendment A, B, C, and potentially D if it were an eighty year. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. That answered my question. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Emily. Do we have any other comments from A P C members online? Okay, hearing none. Thank you. We can move on to public comment. To participate in the meeting, go to trpa.gov and in the calendar, click on Advisory Planning Commission Meeting, April ten, twenty twenty four. There you will find a link to the public webinar hosted on Zoom. If any member of the public wishes to address the A P C, please raise your hand now by clicking the raise hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone and you'll be called on and unmuted by a T R P A staff member. Catherine, do we have any public comments online?
Madam Chair, we have one hand raised so far. The hand up is Ann Nichols. Ann, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. The reason this kind of confusion happens is that at the hearings, the governing board hearings, which maybe you can advise the governing board about this. All due respect to John Hester, we can never hear him. He's so soft spoken. They're changing the motion on the fly. Vince Onigan is throwing out some stuff, Cindy Gustafson. I mean, you don't even know what they've decided. And certainly we don't get to public comment on it to help you guys with your mistakes. So mountain area preservation had to do a lawsuit to let you know that this is totally not cool. So four months later, you try to fix it. But still, the problem is there's no income cap on achievable and most of the projects that are coming forward are achievable housing. So th- this whole process has to be changed. We need to have a comment. Maybe you've listened to it. Never know. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann. Do we have any other public comments?
I guess, Madam Chair, three more hands went up. The next one up is Sophia Hydrick. Sophia, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good afternoon, Advisory Planning Commissioners. My name is Sophia Hydrick and I am the Advocacy Director for Mountain Area Preservation. I wanted to speak today in support of the amendments before you. We did submit a more detailed comment letter. I hope you've had a chance to review it. But I wanted to reiterate a couple of points. As you know, during the December thirteenth governing board hearing, there was quite a bit of discussion around the bonus units pool, as staff mentioned, particularly in regard to the number of achievable housing units available to utilize the new phase two housing incentives. In limiting the number of achievable units, the governing board also lumped the affordable housing units in with the moderate housing units, effectively removing the requirement for any affordable housing to be built under the new incentives. And, you know, while this might be a minor technical change to the language in the amendments, it could have major implications. And that is one of the key points that Matt pointed out to T R P A staff following the governing board hearing and then subsequently included in our legal filing. Affordable housing is the largest housing need for most of the Tahoe Basin, so it is critical that the fifty percent affordable housing requirement be reinstated into the code. And we do have a number of other outstanding concerns related to the phase two housing amendments, including that there is no And we do have a number of other outstanding concerns related to the phase two housing amendments, including that there is no income cap on the achievable housing definition. Those concerns are detailed in our legal filing and in our administrative procedures. But that said, we appreciate TRPA staff for addressing this issue and we do support the changes that are before you today. It is important to ensure that the code language is as clear as possible and that the biggest portion of the bonus unit pie is dedicated to affordable housing. So um, you know, please support these amendments. We really appreciate it and thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comment.
The next hand raised is Doug Flaherty. Doug, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, Chair. Um, TahoeCleanAir.org. Um, my only comment here is um the TRPA is um obviously trying to take some steps to backpedal, which, you know, often doesn't work very well, but be that as it may. Um, the bottom line here is community safety as far as the wildfire impact um on the populations of dense town centers. So while you made some modifications regarding housing, you continue to ignore the public safety hazards associated with de- dense town centers, which serve as dangerous evacuation choke points during wildfire evacuation. And that goes back to the continued insistence on the part of, obviously, your leaders that a roadway by roadway wildfire evacuation capacity assessment not be done. It's one thing, of course, to strengthen our law enforcement and fire capabilities by working together and having unified command meetings and increasing our communities or increasing our communications. That's not the same as analyzing roadway by roadway wildfire evacuation capacity. You guys continue to use uh law enforcement and fires, you know, commitment to to work together uh utilize that idea as some sort of um replacement for a wildfire evacuation capacity analysis. They're two different things. So while these code changes discuss housing issues, you're still not quite understanding that what you're creating are very hazardous choke points within town centers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
The last hand raised is Niobe Burden. Niobe, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Good morning, APC and and staff. Appreciate all the time um being put into this for these changes um and support the changes that have been done so far. Again, I agree with MAP and the others that um the achievable uh definition still needs work, specifically in need of an income cap um like affordable and moderate has. It's apparent by applications coming forward that the achievable, at least on the North Shore, is most attractive and yet does not address the most need that is necessary for workforce on the North Tahoe. There are no affordable or moderate at this point. Um, and so really taking a look at that definition and putting that income cap in there would probably a- address the uh need of the community better. Appreciate more work in this area. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comment.
Madam Chair, one more hand was raised. Uh, Erin Casey, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Erin Casey and I am the CEO for the newly formed Tahoe Housing Hub. And I wanted to thank staff for their efforts to bring this forward, continue to work on addressing our housing issues um and respond to public feedback. I think you all have done a tremendous job. Um, a couple of things I wanted to point out, and one is a question that maybe can be answered at a later time. But in looking at the bonus unit program for TRPA, it appears that a an existing home um could be eligible for a bonus unit if the homeowner is willing to deed restrict that unit. And so I'm curious about whether or not that is actually the case and if the number of achievable bonus units are reduced and a homeowner is willing to deed restrict their home to achievable, does that dwindle the number of achievable deed restrictions or bonus units, I should say, available in the future? So something to think about. The second thing I wanted to point out is, at least on the California side, all of our jurisdictions are required by the state to build a certain number of units within multiple categories of affordability. This also includes a category called above moderate, which is anything above a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Right now, if you look at the percentage of homes across categories required to be built in the state of California alone, when you look at the housing elements and the RENA assignments in the basin, the largest number of new units that needs to be built fall into that above moderate category. And so I would just advise or recommend uh analyzing those things as you are considering the percentage uh bonus units and the affordability levels that they should um be made available to. And I apologize for the noise. I'm outside right now. And then finally, I did want to mention that there are many examples of agencies and organizations providing support to projects that exceed a hundred and twenty percent AMI. Right now, the achievable category, while it's focused on residents, it is really the only option outside of uh local resident to consider uh a project and uh provide an incentive if it exceeds a hundred and twenty percent. And when you look at the requirements um that the agencies have to meet that are uh given to them by the state, plus some of our local programs, for example, the MARTIS Fund, when they did have a down payment assistance program, eligible applicants, um their income levels were capped at a hundred and eighty percent AMI. Um, there are many examples of that. Uh, I think there's work that could be done to provide support on this achievable side, but we definitely need to take that into account, not only because it's important for our community, but there are state requirements associated with that that I think are important to note. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment.
There are no other hands raised to comment, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I see no members of the public here in the room, so I'll just go ahead and close the public comment um portion of this item and turn it back over to APC members for any additional or final comments regarding this item. And Emily, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you. Um, thanks for bringing forward this item today. I think those were um insightful comments from the members of the public. I wanted to provide a couple more comments as we coordinate with the Tahoe Living Working Group and TRPA staff moving forward through phase three amendments. Um, I think this coverage adjustment in theory was very useful. In reality, it's not proving to be very useful for East Placer, the East Placer region in Tahoe. We only have one active stormwater area approved by TRPA right now. We only have one proposed and two constructed, and they're very small areas within our region. So given the housing need in our region, we are unable to utilize and will be for a very long time because stormwater systems take a long time to get approved and built. So we are unable to utilize this coverage amendment um in the majority of our locations. So I would like to propose that we may be able to work on some sort of alternative mechanism to achieve the higher coverage through the phase three amendments um while still maintaining the environmental benefits. I will say as an example of this, we have a developer who approached us last week about some parcels right on twenty-eight, highway twenty-eight in a village center and said he was unable to fully realize the density on that site um largely due to coverage and wanted to instead propose building luxury single family homes, which is not the vision of our area plan and will not meet our housing needs. Um, I'd also like to, as part of that phase three amendment, say that we look forward to working on potentially scaling the residential units of use because our most recent housing assessment for our area conducted by Mountain Housing Council showed that East Placer alone needed eighteen hundred units, up to two hundred and forty-five percent of area median income. And so, you know, most of that opportunity in our region is going to be in the basin. And the roughly nine hundred bonus units left basinwide will not suffice the need through all of our communities, yet alone just placers. So I look forward to working with you all on more creative solutions to advance the workforce housing opportunities and try to make some improvements in our future that can actually be utilized. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Do we have any other comments? Go ahead, Eric.
I'd like to agree with Emily's comments on the on the really good attempt to do something with coverage for affordable housing uh through the uh Tahoe Living Working Group. It became clear from the comments working on that group that coverage was something that could help in that finding a way to to cut loose a little more coverage for uh affordable housing would be very useful. Um, but then the need to mitigate the potential impacts of that extra coverage, I think, is where this uh stormwater collection issue is is coming from. Um, and so from the very beginning, I've I've struggled to really understand it. Um, well, I can only say I don't understand. I do understand it. There there is a a an increased impact from going to seventy percent and you have to do something about that increased impact. But it's always seemed quite obvious to me that this was a barrier, a significant barrier to actually utilizing these incentives. And um I suspect that over time, we're gonna have to come back and revisit this because nobody's gonna be able to do this. There are so few spots where this is available. Um, and so let's give it a shot. Um, but I think that this is one of those points where we're gonna come ha- have to come back and revisit how this works. There have to be alternatives to mitigating that increased impact that don't involve what looks to me like just a real over the top um uh approach to mitigating that impact. Uh, so I'm not against doing it. Let's give it a try. But I don't, I don't see how it's not somewhat obvious that this is a significant barrier to utilizing these incentives that we worked so hard to come up with on that working group. Um, coming up with these incentives and figuring out a way to do that was not easy and it took many, many months and a lot of time. A lot of good work by uh Karen and all of uh of the TRPA staff. And then um we just find a way to trip ourselves up and make them unusable. So let's give it a shot. I hope my prediction is wrong. I hope somebody says, Eric, look, you know, you were so wrong on that. But in the next couple of years, I believe we're gonna be re-talking about this. So that that's my input on it. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Eric. Steve, I see you have your hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I just wanted to to agree with uh with Mr. Young, wholeheartedly. Both the positive step forward, but the just sometimes changing the barriers and we're not making the kind of progress. I think when we hear from from the very few developers that are willing to try to do affordable housing, uh, it's still very difficult. I also agree with some of the comments that Miss Setzer made about uh the numbers that I I wanted to ask, I was looking back through the staff report. We talk about nine hundred and twenty-six units uh available, bonus units available, but I think somewhere I saw, and maybe uh Mr. Marshall or someone can point it out, um that a lot of those have already been committed to projects. Is that accurate?
Yes, um, there is a slide. If you want to go back, Tracy, a couple of slides. Uh, yeah.
That's it.
So this, yeah, there are quite a few projects or or bonus units that have been um reserved for projects in the permitting process right now or are under construction.
I just wanted to make sure to highlight that because I think it's it's not completely accurate to keep using the nine twenty-six number if, in fact, some of those have already been committed or to make sure that we understand what you're showing here, this information on bonus unit accounting. Um, so that we understand that we're already down from from the quote number that was available, right?
Correct. Yeah, the bonus units are, you know, constantly in flux because permits um and reserve, you know, we get inquiries quite often. Um, so we will definitely keep that in mind when we talk about the number um remaining.
Appreciate that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Steve. Any other comments or questions, APC? No? Okay. Emily, I liked your idea of potentially trying to optimize the stormwater treatment element of the additional coverage in phase three. Um, perhaps that would get at Eric's comment as well. So appreciate the um the feedback, everybody, and the the good discussion. Um, at this point, we do have a couple of motions. Is there an APC member who's willing to make a motion?
I'm happy to make a motion, Madam Chair. I move uh to recommend approval of the required findings described in attachment C, including a finding of no significant effect for adoption of the Code of Ordinance amendments as described in the staff summary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Garth. Tracy, may I have a roll call?
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Ms. Setzer?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Ms. Stala?
Yes.
Madam Chair, the motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. So I have a member willing to make the second motion.
If I could just interrupt for this one, Madam Chair, um just on this for a purpose of process, um reference the errata and the the shown in attachment B reflecting the errata, just to make sure that we we catch that last um edit that's been added.
Sure, Madam Chair, I'd be happy to do that.
Thanks, Eric.
I move to recommend adoption of ordinance twenty twenty-four to be determined, amending ordinance eighty-seven dash nine as previously amended to amend the code of ordinances as shown in attachment B, including the errata sheet that was circulated today. Second.
Thank you, Jim. May I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Oling?
Yes.
Ms. Chandler?
Yes.
Ms. Setzer?
Yes.
Ms. Carr?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. Hitchcock?
Yes.
Mr. McNamara?
Yes.
Mr. Tashara?
Yes.
Chief Steven?
Yes.
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Stala?
Yes.
The motion passes.
Thank you, Tracy. Appreciate the great conversation and discussion, APC. We made it through the heart of our agenda. We're now concluded with item six C. Thank you, Alyssa. Have a good afternoon. And we're now on to item seven, reports. And I'll turn it over to John Hester.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Um, this is the best part of the agenda. What do you mean? We've been committed through the
It's a highlight.
I'll be very quick because I know we want to get through it. One, um in May, your upcoming events in May will probably have the package with mixed use, climate change, dark skies that you've already had a public information hearing on, not a decision hearing. Um, and the other thing I wanted to get on your agendas, on your calendars, is tentatively, and this was Ms. Carr's request, we've are going to have a field trip to the Meeks Bay project uh with hopefully the uh Native American tribe or and/or the Forest Service. with hopefully the Native American Tribe or and/or the Forest Service. And probably do that in the morning and then come back in the afternoon and have your meeting where you'll look at the EIS on that project. So that's coming up. We're also working on a field trip that Mr. Holling requested on looking at Forest Health and the NV Energy corridor and all of that. We just haven't gotten the final schedule on that yet, but that will more than likely be on a governing board day in a joint field trip with the governing board. So I wanted to let you know we're working on both of those for your request.
That's great. Looking forward to those trips. Thank you. All right, Item B, General Counsel.
Well, I'm gravely disappointed that you didn't grill Graham here, but notwithstanding that, we did not a whole lot to update, in part because courts these days are moving very slowly. So we have pending motions and a number of pieces of litigation that have been sitting for a while. That's generally because of just the overwhelmed nature of the federal courts. So if you ever want to do something in favor of expediting litigation, please encourage your representatives to urge more resources to federal courts. But we do have the filing, I think we've talked about before, the MAP lawsuit, just to let you know, we are proceeding at pace. We are putting together the administrative record. That should be hopefully done in a couple of weeks. We've filed our answer yesterday. And so once we file the administrative record, that'll put us on a briefing schedule that's in the local rules. Basically, 45 days for the plaintiff MAP to file their opening motion for summary judgment and then 45 days for TRPA to respond and cross-move if necessary. And then that'll be submitted to the, not the district court, but the magistrate judge who's assigned to us. And we both, both parties agreed that we'll try to speed things up a little bit by reaching out to the magistrate rather than the federal district court itself. So we'll see when we get a resolution of that case.
Thank you, John. And now to APC members for updates. We'll start in the room. Eric, do you have any updates for us? Okay, thank you, Mr. McNamara. No? Thank you. Welcome to APC. Good to have you. Mr. Oling?
Yes, thank you. There's a project that I wanted to bring to everyone's attention that just got approved by via decision memo from the United States Forest Service, the Burke Creek Raid Meadow Repair and Restoration Project. Excuse me, right here at the bottom of Kingsbury. And there's going to be quite a restoration that's going to be happening down there in the meadow. And it's it's really exciting. It's a project that I've been working on for a number of years. And you're going to see a lot of activity down there in the meadow this summer. So it's a great project and yeah, just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention. Thank you.
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to report out, please announce that if anyone's aware, the Green Belt pedestrian bike path that the city's been proposing for many years is finally fully funded. And it's going to include pedestrian and bike path nearby McDonald's will hook up to hospital district neighborhood, include interpretive signage, SEC restoration, as well as an adventure play area and a plaza for people to enjoy the outdoors. We're excited about that. Finally funded.
Great project. Thank you. All right, for our APC members online, do you have any updates? Maybe I'll just go down the list. Steve, do you have any updates for us?
Madam Chair, just to to reinforce what you said and what Mr. Hitchcock said, that's a great project. Very glad it's fully funded. Congratulations to the city.
Thanks, Steve. Kevin Hill?
Nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Susan Chandler?
Nothing to report.
Thank you, Susan. Chief Steven?
Hello. Just wanted to say on behalf of the regional chiefs, that's great to hear about the Protect Grant. Law enforcement and the fire chiefs are meeting monthly, really hitting hard on the evacuation routes and improving these 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 access points for us. We live to be pretty aggressive in the coming years, and that that grant will will help also. We're also meeting with Department of Transportation and Caltrans on these same topics. So we're really pushing forward. A lot of work to do, but everything helps. And that's kind of where we're at.
Thank you. Ms. Setser?
I have no updates. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jennifer Carr?
Nothing today. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. I think I've covered everyone. As for me, I don't have any updates this month. Did I cover everybody? Do I miss anybody? Good. All right.
Great job from staff perspective running the meeting, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you. Pinch hitting for Brendan. Hope he's having a great spring break. We do have final public comment before we adjourn. And so we are now on Agenda Item 8, Closing Public Interest Comments. If any member of the public wishes to address the APC, please raise your hand now by clicking the Raise Hand button at the bottom of your Zoom screen or by dialing star nine on your phone, and you'll be called on and unmuted by a TRPA staff member. All public comments should be as brief and concise as possible, so that all who wish to participate may do so. Testimony should not be repeated. The chair shall also have the discretion to set an appropriate time allotment for for individual speakers, three minutes for individuals and group representatives, as well as for the total time allotted to oral public comment for a specific agenda item. No extra time for participants will be permitted by the seating of time to others. In the interest of efficient meeting management, the chairperson reserves the right to limit the duration of each public comment period to a total of one hour. Written comments received by 4:00 PM yesterday were forwarded to the APC members before the meeting start time. Late comments may be distributed and posted after the meeting. Any unheard comments can be submitted via email to publiccomment@trpa.gov. Please include the meeting information and agenda item in the subject line of your email. And please note the Advisory Planning Commission is prohibited by law from taking immediate action on or discussing issues raised by the public that are not listed on this agenda. And so Catherine, do we have any public comments online?
Madam Chair, we have one hand raised. Doug Flaherty, if you unmute, you can address the commission.
Thank you, Chair. Doug Flaherty, TahoeCleanAir.org. Little bit of history. California, there was a Supreme, a California State Supreme Court decision, marijuana users versus the City of San Diego. And I'm not an attorney, but just kind of reading it over. What it basically says, among other things, was if zoning, if there's a zoning change that would cause a physical change to the environment, the zoning change technically is a project. Now, there's much more to that, but basically, if you took a look at the TRPA TBAP approval by the governing board on February 28th, when they approved the TBAP, which is an overarching plan, which included significant changes to land use with regards to Placer County. Basically, as I read it, that TRPA TBAP was a project under the California State Supreme Court ruling. Now, if that's true, here we go past December 31st, where there's been discussions about all projects being having to have a finding of net zero VMTs. The TRPA Board approved that after December 31st. So just my opinion, I think that was a project according to SEQA, the TBAP approval. It was a project approval. TRPA did not find a net zero VMT in their findings. And I think it was in violation of your thresholds and all the other stuff we talked about regarding December 31st and funding levels and that type of thing. So I thought I'd just have, you know, mention that to you. And I guess we're going to find out what kind of impact that really was. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty.
Madam Chair, there are no other hands raised to comment.
Okay, thank you, Catherine. I see no other members of the public in the room, so I'll go ahead and close public interest comments and move to Item 9, Adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All right, Mr. McNamara. Do I have a second?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are adjourned at 1:05. Thank you very much. Bye. Have a good afternoon.